Any questions?
Good.
Some announcements, nomination papers available for local office contacted down there. Presidential primary is Tuesday, March fifth. Last day to request a vote by mail ballot is February twenty seventh.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Tuesday.
And early voting.
Early voting. Thank you.
I know there are people there. Uh, pretty, pretty.
Good. Sage Center, Center Lunch and Learn Series. There's some announcements in the packet that talks about, um, one is the senior, uh, circuit breaker tax relief that is next Wednesday. Thirty. Uh, also there's an R C V clinic, March twelfth, ten to twelve in the annex. And that's it, other than call for volunteers and remind you to subscribe for town emails. Um, any public comment? Then we'll move on. There are no items on the consent agenda. We'll move on to I O C with this town and draft dates.
All right, uh, there's a lot that was in the packet, so I'll, I'll go through this somewhat quickly, but if you have questions on the materials that were in the packet, uh, that's great. The first update is the route one thirteen corridor, uh, planning process that's going along, uh, really nicely. The consultant had been a little bit uh, out of touch for a little while. There was some personal issues, so, uh, some time went by with not a whole lot of progress, but we did reconnect and we had a really good meeting last week. Uh, they've taken all of the public comments they got at the uh, November, uh, fair and forum as well as different comments that staff had given and that uh, we've, uh, heard over the years, we forwarded all of that and they put together base maps reflecting all the comments as well as all the, uh, traffic, uh, that, uh, crash data, incident data. So, uh, they sent over those kind of markup plans earlier today. And their next step is working toward creating, uh, concept plans showing where proposed improvements would be at a conceptual level, whether that's big crosswalks, new head activated blinkers, new, uh, or improvements to sidewalks. Uh, so I think we, uh, you know, we feel good about how that's going along. Uh, we've got our eye on the, uh, it's every year in the March, April timeframe that, uh, M B P C opens its public comment period for the, uh, tip updates and while we won't have a project that's far enough along to be competitive for funding, I do expect that we'll uh, submit information to M B P C formally. They've been at the loop on all this, but something more formal just so that uh, this effort is kind of formally on their radar so that in future cycles, we can hopefully get some number of projects to a state of readiness that they can be competitive to be listed in the regional, uh, transportation improvement program. Uh, and as I noted in the memo, uh, at some point, once that those concept plans are ready, uh, that will be presented at public meetings and we'll get, uh, we'll get input on that. We've talked about some, uh, you know, what we would do for outreach, uh, and at a staff level, we haven't ruled out the idea of uh, actually sending a mail-in when the time is right to everyone, the property of buying the whole corridor from Cross, that's a new reform. Probably got quite a lot of people turning up, but, but, you know, this is the time, you know, for people to really engage at a conceptual planning level. Uh, cause it's, uh, you know, it's not binding decisions, but it's things that do kind of then get more momentum as they move to, uh, higher levels of, uh, engineering and design. Uh, next item regarding the Middle Street Bridge, uh, we did get confirmation that the council had referred the letter we'd sent, uh, about a month ago to their subcommittee that meets a week from tonight. Uh, six thirty is when the meeting is posted. I don't yet know when within their meeting, whether it's likely to come up early or late, but once I have more on that, I'll let you know. Uh, but I'll be there next week. I know Rick, uh, as much as he would love to be there, uh, he can't and he really would love to be there, you know that. Uh, but he can't be there, uh, but it looks like they'll, they probably provide a hybrid option so that he'll be listening. Yeah. So I'm gonna listen to Wendy or if you, uh, and Chris both intend to go, uh, I don't know if we need to.
What night is it?
Uh, Monday night, the fourth. So, uh, but, you know, I hope to come away with that with, um, you know, some gauge on the, the council's receptiveness to, uh, uh, A, authorizing the work, B, contributing funds to the work, uh, so. Uh, next item is, uh, the correspondence from Mayor Reardon regarding the new task force that, um, he's, he's looking to get off the grounds, uh, regarding the Whittier Regional Agreement. Uh, we do have a meeting coming up, um, in Newbury Court, so I, uh, he's offered his outreach. His, his goal would be that there be two attendees from each community initially, both the kind of chief administrative, uh, person myself and, uh, someone from the chief elected body. So I don't know if one of the three of you is available at the time that it's, uh, uh, taking place, uh, which is next Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday.
March fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the sixth. Yeah, he said, his email says the fourth, but he got it wrong. He meant that he's, he meant the sixth. Uh, so we don't, so I was gonna sign that tonight.
I know that's something Chris is interested in.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. And, and we don't, you know, we don't need to have the board appoint someone if at some point it becomes a more formal body. There is a point that it would become a public body, subject to, you know, postings and minutes and all that, but I think at this point it's really at the exploratory stage to kind of see what traction it gains.
It'd be good to add the, the agenda for that meeting.
Yeah.
It would be amenable to that.
Just to be, to make sure that they're, they're clear that there's a point at which it's a public body. Yeah, uh, yeah. And, and that would be, you know, at that point, it would be, we'd be looking for this board to actually designate someone rather than right now it's more informal. Yeah. Uh, next item, I wanted to keep this on because we're, uh, we've been at a, a key point in the hazard mitigation planning, uh, process. And, uh, uh, we're trying to get our updates done. It's, it's been really hard to find the time. Uh, but we've got a number of staff involved with that and we, uh, we have a meeting this Wednesday to try to get our input finalized on the draft work project. So we can stay on track with the overall schedule to get that plan submitted to the state beds, uh, later this spring. Um, what they go getting it approved, uh, this calendar year to make sure that we're eligible for primarily hazard mitigation grants. And, uh, as I said in my memo, there's, uh, you know, obvious, uh, application of those grants, uh, I don't, I don't know with the M V P River Road process. I know that's, that's not going to result in specific projects. So I think there's going to need to be extra, you know, additional layers of, uh, design and planning before we have actionable, you know, improvements along the river. But uh, at some point that has mitigation planning funding or, or hopefully construction funding is going to become really important. Uh, next item we did complete last week, the, uh, sixth session, uh, professional development course. It was really very, uh, favorable and it was a very good decision to do that. I think everyone who participated really had very positive experience both in the curriculum, the, uh, the trainer who's excellent, uh, as well as just the, uh, kind of camaraderie and team building when we came out of the process. It was really, uh, very good and, uh, I did carry some funding in my proposed F Y twenty five budget to offer the same opportunity to an additional number of staff. Uh, next item, we, we had our meeting last week with our, uh, insurance rep and we had gotten a phone call back, uh, two or three weeks ago with the two point two percent increase. So we knew that, but last week was the where we kind of locked that in, signed the paperwork and we also got, uh, updates on some additional uh, employee benefits, uh, some of which are, are really, really good. You know, fitness benefits are different kinds of specialized, uh, um, resources that are made available to, uh, members and their families. So, uh, Caitlin Gilbert, who, uh, is really the benefits administrator, we're going to build out a more robust section of her, uh, webpage to, to better highlight that, uh, because she provides all that stuff at the point of hire. And obviously if anyone asks, uh, you know, but it's typically like at the point of hire, people are given, you know, that big
The package.
A stack of paper and we want to do a better job year round making that, you know, reminding staff that like there's like a lot of great benefits, uh. I, I realized I can get a refund on some of my tennis.
Really?
So, yeah, it's a three hundred dollar fitness back. So I've been leaving money on the table for years. So, uh, but I think, I think it was a very, very good.
It's just not like you. I watch the towns money a lot.
But anyway, I think it was a very good meeting and, and the two point two percent renewal, obviously.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Really good. We did, we did. Yeah. We, we did ask, uh, about potentially the, that top tier plan. We've talked about this a couple of times and Rick, I know you'll, you'll remember, we've never, never talked about it a great deal, but we, we always look at that plan that we carry that no one is on. But it is, uh, what state requirement that we offer a P P O. Is that the right terminology? Caitlin knows that. I think that's it. And, and we have to offer it. It's, it's a the premium plan. You can see from the rates, it's, it's the highest. There's not a single employee that's been on it in my entire time here. Uh, we had hoped we might be able to swap that out with something that's more of like a deductible plan. Uh, but, but we couldn't do that. We did, but we did have that conversation this cycle as we have in the past. Uh, next item, the, uh, River Road Resiliency Planning. I know you both are, all, all three of you received the draft reports a couple of weeks ago. We have another meeting with a consultant this Wednesday. So Christine Wallace, who's been the, she's the staff project manager on that, worked closely with Lisa and the, um, Client Change Resiliency Committee, um, is, has been really, you know, open to get as many comments as, as, uh, people have time to offer, uh. I wish we had more time to provide comments, but we're on a condensed schedule because the state only gave us ten months to do two years of work. So, um, um, there's, there, as you know, looking at them, there's a lot in there. So.
So is the committee meeting to, are you calling it as a committee or individually?
Uh, individually. So that's all I have for my updates.
Okay. Um, next item is, uh, department updates. So first is an A E D grant in order to please. Um, and this is four or this, this is one A D, right?
I think it's a dollar figure.
Yeah, nineteen fifty, but I'm just.
I think that's gonna be one.
Yeah, I think that's one. Yeah. Thank you. And then the next item is, uh, pre-construction meeting for the Church and Prospect Street Water Main Project.
So I had included this just to provide a kind of a just brief update. We had the, the meeting with the uh, the selected under the police last Thursday, uh, but, you know, we've got Bob and Mark here. There are a lot more hands on with it. So, uh, but I was, you know, just kind of let everyone know to place, they're under contract. Um, I, I don't have a whole lot more to say, but you guys might want to elaborate on, on that.
We, we had the meeting with them. They had all their, their paperwork in order. Um, I did a drive around with them. They were very comfortable with the, this, you know, the roads and they put miles of pipe in a year and they're just like, yeah, this is small and they were comfortable. So.
Where are they from?
Uh, I don't have their, one was from Miami, one was from Mass. I'm not sure where their office is.
Yeah.
Was it in the building? Was that Angus? He believes.
It's somewhere in this, I, I, I thought it was one of the W towns, like, uh, uh, Woburn or something, but I can't, I can't, I can't.
I do fire away. They do a lot of work in here.
Yeah. And when, so when will the project start?
They wanted to stop before April first. It'll be a moratorium until April fifteenth. We'll let them, we'll let them work if, whether permitted, it'll be able to stop the week of the seventh, sock on your roads. Sock your roads and pipe.
Great. Sound W.
Uh, but they're, they're, they're excited to go.
Yeah.
I think, uh, you know, Bob's gonna be watching closely. Uh, there was a little discussion out there about soils and what they can expect some surface and maybe they're not, haven't worked in this exact location, might find some things.
Well, I just, I just I had to listen to Joe.
Yeah.
It was, you know, oh, we're gonna put in six hundred feet and they said, no, you don't have.
In it there, in it there.
They're, they're, so they were wondering about this soil. This is a lot of rock out there. So.
They were surprised to hear that.
Yeah, particularly on Prospect Street. There's a bunch of rock out there.
So we need.
Rockets and ledge.
Huh?
Rocket and ledge or?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So that makes a little area of potential change orders or those kinds of.
It was something that just, you know, hopefully everything is fine.
Yeah.
You know, just I didn't tell one of the people.
Yeah, right.
But that, but that issue, I mean, it does tie a little bit into the financing strategy because as we've talked about, you know, if we go to long-term borrowing, you know, we don't, we're not going to know the cost of the project for two years until it's actually closed out. And so that's something I, I had a little, uh, meeting after the pre-con, pre-con with, uh, Steve Denay from David Howard with Godey, just to talk a little bit further about, you know, I think we'll in the next month, we're, we're really going to need to decide, are we doing long-term borrowing or, or more bond anticipation notes and much as I hate doing the bands every year, it's a real headache, uh, there might be a good reason to continue to do that until this project's closed out.
Are we going to do bands on?
We can do them for up to ten years and we're into the, what, fifth, or the fifth year? So we could do them another, you know, five to six years, uh, but it's not, you know, there, there's costs, there's soft costs as well as the time it takes to reissue that every single year.
Um, I think this would be a good time to take the ARCA thing out of order. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, can I just ask, um, is, is there, you alluded to potential for change orders. Is, is there, um, provision in the contract with them for change orders that run into ledge, full ledge and stuff?
Okay.
In this per yard. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Okay.
Um, so we're gonna take item F C now because you're both here and because it relates to the, the pipeline project. So this has been brought up at least three of the last meetings, but it hasn't formally been on the agenda. And so it's just kind of floated along. So I apologize for not addressing it square on and, you know, getting it resolved. Um, Chris had wrote a memo. Do you have a lower page that's on? That's the problem with taking things out of order.
Well, but I can, the nice thing is I can just do that.
But then I lose my place. Okay.
Oh, no, that one too. No.
F C is page seventy seven.
Oh, yeah. Yes, seventy seven.
Yeah. So, so, um, I guess, you know, his point, um, which is detailed in this memo is that it, uh, the decision to give ARCA funding is related to, um, a specific need to buy the pipe because of, you know, um, delays in delivery and scheduling and all that. And so what this memo is saying is that he feels like those conditions no longer exist because we decided to, or the water department decided to contract it together. And the bid came in so much lower. Um, so I, I think, you know, I appreciate that he looked into this and I think it's good for everybody to know. Um, but, um, so I would just, you know, we can discuss how you feel about that. Um, my thought is that, you know, if we were going to make a change in the ARCA thing, that should happen back when we decided to co-mingle with contracts. I mean, I don't think it's fair to do it at this point when you've already been proceeding ahead. Um, my other thought is that I think the amount of money that is, we're going to be paying for pipe is probably about six hundred thousand. I just did some, you know, linear but assumptions for laying pipe. And so even though it's now part of a combined contract, we're still paying the same amount for, for pipe and material. So. And if you look at the memorandum of under, understanding, I mean, if we had had any anticipation of, you know, revising the agreement, if the bids came in lower, it should have been in there. We do stipulate if the bids are higher or if the amount was higher, that it would have to be revisited.
Yeah.
So those are my feelings.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I mean, I, I quite honestly, um, I think we need to be true to our word. And I mean, that, this, my first thought about this was we need to be true to our word and, and we had an agreement. Um, and uh, although in the past we haven't always worked in partnership, um, between this law and the board commissioners, my hope is that going forward we will. Um, and, and, um, so a, a change and certainly a significant change in ARCA funding would, would, um, would not be along those lines. Um, and, um, you know, going back you know, two or three years, um, you know, we were very concerned about long-term, not, not just this particular project, but what else is coming down the line, um, that the water department's going to have to deal with in terms of, um, pipe replacements and upgrades. And, and, um, so, you know, the, the ARCA funds are kind of found money, um, and using them for this purpose, you know, benefits. You know, all the, all the rate payers benefits, the water department benefits, all the rate payers, um, and puts things in a better position for future work and, and having less debt in the future. Um, you know, going into future work. Um, so I, you know, um, you know, at, at Board of Water Commissioners meeting, you know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I said, you know, I just suggested that, you know, well, as, as that been proposed here, um, that, uh, perhaps something, um, uh, proportional, um, that there be a proportional change, um. I, I, you know, I was, I was transferring thoughts from this meeting. I wasn't necessarily on board with that. I wouldn't argue if the Board of Water Commissioners came forward and said as a gesture that, um, that you thought a particular reduction is appropriate. Um, but I'm not comfortable, you know, based on everything up to this point. Um, so what we did telling, telling that, uh, you know, coming up with a number and saying this is what you need to do, or this is what we will do. Uh, but again, it wasn't in the, the, the agreement that we, um, that we had going back several months.
Right. And, you know, first of all, as a member of the board, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that the board has selected and gave us the money. Uh, I think at this point take a portion of it back. And we've already gone up to bid, we've got the bid, we've already set our rates, budget, everything else. That would be going back and retooling pretty much a lot of different things. And between Rob Phillips and, uh, Jack Duggan, they worked for months to get this, you know, our budgets and everything else all straightened out and, and the ARCA money was part of it. And I obviously believe that and this is just me, but if you give it one hand and then take back in another hand, you're, you're, you're kind of setting a long precedent. Uh, and I think you're doing the rate pairs kind of a disservice to them because we've obviously had to block on the rates. But it's minimal. It's, uh, not a huge amount. And a lot of that was the, the money, the ARCA money gave us to help toward that project.
Rates down.
It helped keep the rates down. And, you know, I for one appreciate that. And I'm pretty sure those who paid the money, those are going to appreciate that. So.
I think, you know, overall in terms of process, the only time this board should go back on a prior board's decision is if the conditions change. And, and there is an argument to be made that the conditions changed here. However, you know, it's my opinion that we should, you know, move forward and if we do another agreement like this, we should consider all possibilities. Like, you know, what if the bid comes in lower? You know, what if it's higher? So, um.
Next time is our response.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't think we need to vote on this, Angus.
Uh, no, only if there was any change. But now it's.
Okay.
So you are affirming it and we go.
We're not changing it. So, yeah.
Me too. Thank you.
Um, so item, let's see, we'll go back to item D. No, we're on I O C now.
Yeah, this is actually one, uh, also I had put on, uh, E, item E A really just as a kind of process update to let the board know that the you know, water commissions really made a huge amount of headway on both their budgeting and, and rate setting and, and did meet last week and arrived at uh, consensus on a new rate structure that they intend to refer to hearing. Um, obviously they didn't vote the structure. They need to have a public hearing to do that, but they did, um, arrive at the rate structure that they think makes sense and that will be presented after hearing. So since we have Bob and Mark here, happy for them to elaborate, but, but that's really all I was gonna say on it. And and at the time that we posted this, I, I wasn't certain on the date, so I didn't put it on here. We've since confirmed it's, it is going to be March twenty first.
Yeah.
So, uh, so once we have a time, you know, we can help get the word out about that.
Okay, we're having the postcards meet up and everything right now.
Good.
Get everything ready to be kind of open.
Will that be daytime or evening? I know, we just said you don't, we don't have time yet, but I'd say, as you say.
Around six-ish, yeah. I had thought about seven, but then it was brought up and a lot of people home a lot earlier than that now. So we've thought maybe we get it through at six o'clock, we'd be out there before seven.
We're taking you over the, uh, this one, six o'clock.
All right. So it's just the annex or are you having?
We're probably doing the annex. I don't know how many people will, will actually show up. We may get, we may get fifty, we may get five. Uh, have no idea.
Are you gonna have?
But I'd rather have space to f- fifty people.
Are you gonna have a remote option or none?
We hadn't thought about that, but, uh.
We discussed it, but if it's in the annex, I, I, I don't know.
No, I was gonna suggest if you have it in here, perhaps you could.
Yeah, and if it's in here, perhaps, but when we discuss the annex.
Yeah, we discussed.
I, I was, I was kind of like, it's, it's a little awkward over there. I don't think it works quite as well as what works here.
But perhaps you could also reserve this room in case you only get ten people and then it would be a lot more.
Can, can you move things like that or is that?
Sure. Oh, come on, Jim.
Why? Don't we have an authority sitting over there?
It's.
All food and clothing, all food and clothing.
All right.
One thing, I, I mean, I've said this, you have water commission meetings as well, but, uh, I think it's great what they're doing with, with the mailing. Uh, because even if you don't have a big turnout, it goes a long way to let people know well ahead of time. That way, whether they choose to come to the hearing or not, they have the opportunity. And for those to do, it's a great opportunity to, you know, it's kind of a teaching moment. It's not just about the rates. It's about all the work that's going on, on, on capital planning and the church and prospect improvements and, um, you know, I just, I think it's a great opportunity for the department to engage with its customers and, um, you know, and definitely, you know, to give people plenty of advance notice before a rate change is always good practice. So going to really commend you guys for what you're doing there. So confirming the date. March twenty fifth.
March twenty first.
So we send postcards to all residents?
She planned what water uses.
What, yeah, rate pairs.
Yeah, rate.
And obviously the public is welcome, whether they live on Main Street or.
Maybe you could have the email blast. Just, I mean, I think it's good to bring.
That's all, no, there's more than just postcards. We're talking about what you would expect us to talk about.
This is the, uh, postcards. It's gonna be on the town website.
There'll be stuff. We'll craft stuff. Cause like Angus says, it's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a teaching moment.
It's part of the narrative, right?
Part of the narrative. It's a complex area. There's a lot of issues.
And, and it does affect those that have even other ones.
Affects everybody that lives in.
It affects everybody in town that's wearing a.
Yeah. All right, great. Um, item B, C P C actions taken, um, so this is, uh, do you have it there? What year? Page thirty? So we voted on the cemetery cleanup. That was approved. The pickable feasibility study was approved, um, and the portable house transfer. The trust transfer was approved. Um, the Sawmill Brook Trail, I'm looking for some feedback. You want a brick?
The calendar.
So this is, the, the original one that went in was designed permitting for two different locations, perhaps three.
Okay.
Um, so the current iteration is actually designed permitting and building of a, a ward walk in this location. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
So this is right off.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a perennial stream, um, and, and due to, partly due to the permitting requirements, you know, um, Michelle, the conservation agent is proposing a crossing there. Um, she has it as forty feet long and that's to accommodate the grades. It kind of slopes down.
Okay, so right now you're on the road.
No.
You're on.
The circle right there. That's where the bridge is proposed.
Okay.
And there's a couple of, uh, this is in the CPC application that Mayor.
Oh, okay.
They, they watch and then the board's back.
Okay, sorry.
CPC proposal.
So, I mean, the, the whole concept is to make something that volunteers could construct. This is the design from the Cockin Street Bridge that was put in several years ago, almost ten years ago now. Um, so in the application, she gave some options in terms of the material, wanting, um, Um, so in the application, she gave some options in terms of the material, wanted, um, composite material that was quite a bit more expensive. Uh, she also put in the price for lumber. And, um, so worst case scenario, she, the, um, cost was fifty thousand dollars and that assumed the composite material and we had to contract it out that we couldn't get volunteer labor. So this is, you know, absolutely worst case. So, um, there was some discussion at CPC about whether that's the right way to go to assume the worst case. You know, maybe make some beneficial assumptions and then you have to go back in six months. Um, the open space committee had a lot of concerns about it. They, you know, wanted something shorter. So it's a, it's a select board application, so I'm just kind of looking for feedback on, from you at least, as to whether you should try to revise this application or just go forward with what Michelle has proposed and the conservation commission unanimously supported.
Okay, so, um, can you move your, can, can you estimate where the, um, how, how is this going to connect with the, uh, the easement on?
On Forehouse?
Uh, no, no.
On Deer Run?
On Deer Run.
It's not, it's not.
Okay, so this is not a way to connect it, okay.
No, so they, they got pretty far, uh, we even shut it pretty far into trying to scope out the design and permitting for the Deer Run and the Forehouse Lane. And it was, it was in excess of two hundred thousand dollars probably to build it. And so they decided to take a step back and try to do something that could be built, you know, in the near term instead of a, a long-term project.
Okay.
So, um, this, this is a, um, ecologically vulnerable location because the stream gets crossed with forests and snowmobiles and, you know, the banks are kind of widened out for this particular place.
Okay, so where, where's this relative, uh, if you continue all the way out Forehouse Lane, you know, up over the hill, down to the inflow into, into, uh, Mill Pond?
Well, this is across, yeah, see the, the green on the right-hand side, that's the town forest.
Yeah, okay, and, and, all right, so, no, so, okay, so, yeah, that's the, um, okay.
Across some, kind of affects there.
That's serious. Okay, I didn't. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to digest this at all, really, place where that is on the stream. I'm familiar with the stream crossing there, but that's on the property owned by, um, uh, Graham, by the Bat, not by Graham, but by the Basslers. Um, so I'm not.
Seeing this shot, how the, the slope, so the, the idea is to have a boardwalk that would just go straight across and then would be.
Okay, so this is an, this is, there's an existing stream crossing here and there was a bridge at this point.
There, there was a crossing, but it's been removed. It was not a sectioned crossing.
Yeah, okay. So, so there was a crossing there as recently, there was a, a bridge in, in significant disrepair until fairly recently. When was that? That was just, I just want to make sure I understand exactly what we're looking at. I mean, I think I recognize that view.
I understood that, that the bridge hasn't been there for a few years, but maybe that's not correct.
Okay, I thought it was still there, okay. Um, okay. And so.
So the question is, do we want to scale back?
So, so you're looking from the side, but basically Forehouse Lane is at your back from this view, looking along the trail.
I'm not sure which direction this is, oh, looking west, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's.
And that's on the other side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, and how far does the trail extend on the, um, on, on the, um, Sawmill Brook property at that point?
Right now it goes all the way out to Harpolis. Um, but the Mill Pond Committee and Open Space Committee are looking at making a circular path that will loop from that bridge through that property and back over the bridge to the rest of the the area.
Okay.
So that, that's not part of this proposal and there's no problems or anything.
Go on, just, just to give a better.
Yeah, that's the, the star is where we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, you know, still, Rick, it's still the goal absolutely to get this crossing here.
Yeah.
Uh, but this one is going to take, uh, you know, we, we want to bring forward a good number to town meeting. We don't want to come up ju- just guess. Like, it's not going to go over well. And one of the many complications of this one is, uh, you know, Butch has said that in order for his crew to be able to get up to maintain the cemetery, that's going to need to allow for at least every now and then vehicular access. So then it's just, it brings it to a, another level.
Right.
So that's going to take some real scoping to come up with a, a good cost estimate to get that designed and permitted, uh, that, that cropping. This one here, uh, Michelle has come up with what I think is a, a pretty nice alternative way for this easement to tie into this property, but that's something that's going to, that would require agreement by multiple private parties and, and, uh, you know, our hope is to avoid something as costly as what's shown here. Because as, as Wendy said, uh, you know, the, the feedback we were getting, first of all, the engineers that Christine or Michelle had contacted weren't comfortable giving any kind of pricing without actually going on site and walking, and there just wasn't, wasn't time to do all that. Uh, but the orders of magnitude, it was going to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and we all don't know that the town would have the appetite for that kind of investment.
Yeah.
Uh, so the idea in scaling it back was to do something much more achievable that's actually results in not just design and permitting, but the actual crossing, something tangible. So, uh, you know.
There's a interest in the Mill Pond Committee and Open Space into, to volunteering and helping build it, so.
Yeah.
Around that as well.
So Wendy, I mean, to, uh, I, I would probably be more on the, on the side of like a smaller bridge, even understanding that does require wetlands protection act permitting. I think the idea of like a forty-foot span to me is, it, it, you know, I, it's, to me, I would rather see a smaller crossing, even understanding that that might actually require more permitting.
Yeah, that Michelle was trying to avoid, you know, the permitting.
So the forty-foot bridge would not require?
It would be outside.
It would be an RDA instead of, uh, a nose of intent, so, I mean, you wouldn't have to do a delineation, would just be a less, less of a hurdle.
Cause there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard Michelle say there's no border and vegetated wetlands here. It's just a, a discrete, see what I mean? So.
So, I mean, there's a couple of options, yeah. We can make it shorter. Uh, we can assume that we have volunteer labor. If that doesn't work out, come back to town meeting in the fall. We could go with wood instead of composite material.
Okay, well, you know, I, I mean, I'm thinking about it from a long-term, um, main standpoint. You know, a, a shorter bridge and better material, I think would be better. Um, I see better material being more durable, so the composite material would strike me as being better.
Yeah, the composite material also has the advantage of it can be constructed by volunteers with less skill. Maybe so, so maybe that's the way.
So when you say composite material, Trex or something like that, or something?
I don't remember the name of it, but it was six dollars a linear foot compared to say three dollars a linear foot for, you know, wood, so it was double the price. But, you know, fifty-year longevity and, and could be, uh, assembled by home too, so. So does that sound like a way to go maybe to, to assume volunteers use the composite and see what if we can shorten it up?
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I would, that's what I think would be a better option.
All right.
Wendy, I would, in that last week's open space meeting, uh, you were, so does it seem that with scaling it back and getting it to a, a smaller number, there's a number that that committee will support it? Cause obviously, you know, it would be tough going to town meeting with something that they're actively not supporting.
I'm not sure. Not all of the opposition was actually even about this particular crossing, so.
Okay.
Um, but I know that Graham had concerns about the length, and so I think getting the chair on board would be.
Uh, beating forty feet, I think he would like to stay short.
And that's some of the concerns, whether that's such a natural area to put a forty-foot bridge in there, but I don't know. I mean, I feel like, you know, we had our town staff do their due diligence and come up with a design. I, I feel somewhat reluctant to, to change it, just based on feedback from the committees, but, I mean, I, I do want it to pass, so.
Yeah, but I do think, I'm not certain, but I think part of what was behind Michelle's suggestion was to minimize permitting, not necessarily what would be the best, uh, kind of logical fit for this spot, I don't know.
Yeah, the challenge with the CPC funding is you can't get a hard number, right, without going out to bid? And so you have to overestimate and, but I think that nuance was lost in the Open Space Committee, that if we don't need fifty, if it's only twenty, that's all we'll spend and then the rest will just stay, so. But I, I think that sounds like a good, um, approach if you're on board with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you just look back to what the design was that, um, had, was proposed?
This is not the proposed design.
Oh, oh, okay.
That was, um.
Now, the original application had called for design and engineering for multiple locations.
Okay.
And, and then, you know, after, you know, a fair amount of correspondence with prospective engineers and coming up with either, you know, they couldn't give a price because they, there were too many variables or, uh, you know, we, we looked at the, uh, cost estimate we got for the wetstone, uh, which was, what, a hundred and thirty-some odd thousand dollars for a much simpler project, uh, so we're starting to roll sticker shock. Particularly for this one.
Yeah, and that.
Well, that, yeah, that one is really, that's complex.
Yeah, yeah, you know, cause we walked through there.
Yeah, yeah.
And the primary party interested in that is ACTA, so I would think it perhaps, you know, might have to take the lead on this and, you know, we could assist them.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to see the revised application report goes in to CPC?
Um, yeah, be interested in that, yeah.
Uh, next, I, um, I would do it at time, right? Uh, review and confirm method of funding, oh wait, did I skip one, Jim?
I just a couple of accounts.
Okay, and how much was that?
Five thousand, I think.
Five thousand, I think.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, five thousand dollars, yeah. Except for.
Okay. Uh, so I think we'll try to take on item B, which is the police cruiser replacements before FinCon starts. Uh, I guess my question on this is if we do decide it's really a capital item, what do we do? Because it's not, there's no warrant article for this year.
Uh, I would, I would think the right thing to do would be to post that opening of the warrant and to add the article, post the warrant.
Okay, Rick, you have thoughts about the whole budget line item versus?
Um, well, I was trying to follow the, the, uh.
Yeah, there was a lot.
There, there's, there's a lot in there and I was trying to, uh, it wasn't clear to me if, um, there was a point being made or attempted, attempting to be made about, um, the number of police vehicles, because there was a lot of discussion of that and everything that was in there. Um, you know, we currently have five. Um, and, uh, so I guess my first question is, was there, was that an intended question?
No, it's just happens to be all the.
Well, I, I, and I recall that discussion from town meetings going back a number of years, um, but I, I was.
I think that question is what prompted the move towards having it be a more, or, I mean, a budget line item, so that there's more transparency. I just, I don't understand, I mean, it's not, why increase the budget forty thousand this year by a cruiser and then next year it drops back down again? It just seems like it's the kind of thing you should put money into every year and then you need a, a vehicle by it.
So would there then be a, uh, you know, a, a cruiser stabilization fund?
I mean, there could be, or we could just use the capital stabilization, or just like we do for DPW vehicles.
It would be part of the capital planning. It would just sit there as a line.
Right, that's what I just said. I mean, do you see any advantage to keeping it as a, a budget line item?
No, I, quite honestly, no, I don't. But, you know, to me, it's, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, um, particularly biased towards either, either solution. I mean, I, I think.
It's the only department that, that does that.
Yeah, right. But it's also the only department that has, you know, reasonably regular requirement for a fairly similar piece of equipment.
Angus, do you have any objection to changing it to?
No, I mean, I, you know, what my takeaway from a lot of those minutes was that, geez, this town has spent a lot of hours over a lot of years debating whether to buy a cruiser. And my feeling is if you have a full, fully staffed police department, part of that is they got to have vehicles. So some of the debate in the old days struck me as like kind of much more fundamental was the level of service expectations. I think if the community wants to have a, a full service police department, two, two officers on twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, you need vehicles. So I, I, I hope that if it becomes a warrant article, it doesn't politicize that, because I, I don't, I wouldn't hear for all that debate, but it just struck me as like not that constructive.
Yeah, well, so, so, you know, some of the background in the past was it was highly.
Yeah.
And, and, but that, but, but that wasn't necessarily because it was a warrant or it was in a budget, it would be because it was, uh, personality clashes.
Right. And, but, but no, to, to answer your question, no, there's no, no concern.
So we would have to reopen the warrant and add an article?
Yeah.
Rob, do you have any input on this?
Yeah, I think we should observe our capital planning process, and I don't think it makes much sense to pull something out that's clearly a capital item and bury it into an operating budget. I think that's one of the stupidest things I've ever heard.
How do you really do?
No, I, I, no, if there's problems with the, the transparency of the capital planning, then we have to address that. I don't really see that. I really think the, if you think of the worksheet, that spells out the specific items that we're carrying. That thing should be as known as the operating budget. If it isn't, shame on us. I mean, that, you know, maybe, maybe it's better, we gotta make sure something gets into the financial planning book at every, every, uh, town meeting. I, I, I just, I, I know where these debates came from. They were very political and they're very much about individuals. Like, I don't think we have that, but even if we had that, I, I think we've got to stick to our capital planning process as coherent, not overpart because of the load stuff.
No. So if we want to move ahead with that?
We just, we could put it on the next agenda to, to reopen the warrant.
Okay.
And, uh, you could open it, add that article, close it, and be done, move forward.
Okay.
Okay, all right, let's do that. All right, it'd be six fifty-eight. Let's convene with FinCon.
It's gonna take a couple of minutes to get up there.
You guys are both.
I gotta move my chair.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much on the, I think, you know, the, the sentiment about this also affects the downstream. It's really important with everybody. All this stuff.
Right.
Okay, so we're moving off on item D.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
I would go that far. Although that does mean that assessors are going to be waiting around.
Yeah, Jim.
Thank you, it's just in correspondence.
Much better.
Angus. It seems like, I don't know if it's an option, it seems like it's smaller than the whole.
There's two of them.
You can tell the patrician versus the flambeen, so. It's no question about it. It's like major.
All right, are you calling the order, Rob?
We're not asking for any special.
So they're being a quorum, um, of the finance committee, it looks like. Call this meeting to order during session, we're creating this back order.
All right, so shall we start with the budget items or the articles? Any preference, Rob? Any preference, Rob?
I think it's like the items.
Okay.
You kind of led with the budget.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, so.
I'm just looking for it now, that was a separate email.
Oh, yes, separate packet, and it's on, it's on posted with a packet online, so if you don't have it in your email, it's a. A supplemental packet.
Yeah.
Angus, you're TJing, so.
All right, I just wanted to give one, give one of you a chance to get the material, so the uh first section's the moderator budget, you know, never uh. Yeah, never a lot of. Potential amount. So, level funded uh proposed budget.
So, any instructions on this? Okay, is there enough?
No.
Thank you, Rick. So how do you want to do?
I, I think just for expediency, unless there's discussion, we'll just know.
It's like, it's like the town, someone puts a whole.
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next uh section's the select board budget. The uh. Uh, basically proposing level funding the professional technical services and uh some increase in the operating expenses. We're still kind of in the uh. Uh, process of the transition from a couple of years ago when the board had a part-time staff person to now where. Uh, there's more support going from uh, you know, in addition to my office, but current office and so forth, so. You know, we still make, got calls on expenses and where to, you know, charge things, we. A breakdown was what some of that expense, we give a, you know, clear insight into the types of expenses that are hitting the board's line versus the. Like the finance department.
So in something like this, we better looking at page ten. In the package.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Uh, I mean, this is illustrative, uh, the numbers that would, would, you know, be binding would be those that are in the actual.
So, and so this one, uh, because it's uh level funded, someone might want to look. To see the details down below, but again, if there's nothing that we want to discuss, there are going to be some that we'll look at the detail then.
Yeah. Look at, yeah. Yes.
It seems like a lot of the expenses are just kind of catch-ups.
Yeah, there is, there is some of that in the board's expense and I, I think with this board, uh, you know, they've been. You know, pretty proactive on some things, um, like with the, the mailing with Whittier, that was a good example of something, there's not. A budget for that, but we reabsorbed that within the, within the board's uh budget. Uh, the filing fees for the MISA, that's something that's really. The requirements haven't changed over the years, but now we're actually following the, the requirements and. Uh, we, one, one uh thing that we, we had paid in the current fiscal year, the Hilltop Securities Annual Report, that's the financial report for borrowing, uh, we had, that's been something that, if you look over fifteen years, has kind of varied where it's been paid from. We did build that into the finance department budget for next year, uh, so that wouldn't come out of the board's budget.
Dan and I were chatting it, but for the fiscal year twenty-five proposal, under the select board, professional technical services, miscellaneous slash unanticipated, is that kind of a purpose of that, just kind of be a catch-all just?
Yeah, I mean, it's often, yeah, that number, that ten thousand, that's been a pretty uh consistent number over a long time. And there hasn't been like. A, a specific breakdown going into the year, so what I provided here is just kind of where the costs have actually gone in the current year. Uh, so, you know, proposed, it, you know, I can't see the future and the types of, of expenses. Part of why I included some that have zeros next to them, like the survey, Donnelley survey, that was something that we didn't incur anything this fiscal year. But from, you know, I'd look back a couple of years and putting this together, so I included everything where there had been expenses in the prior couple of years. So that was one where I think it was maybe for that.
Yeah, for the end of um.
Yeah, Corlent Lane, yeah, that, that, you know, we needed a surveyor and, and so that was a, a, you know, expense line that we could hit for that since it was being initiated by the board, so.
One thing we are gonna um do in the future is uh costs associated with land purchases and CRs that are CPA funded. Attach that to the original application, a lot of times the select board or town manager budget picks up those costs, like the title insurance policy for Salma Brook. You know, so really that should be part of the CPA project to be there, but so.
And there's always this fighting around as, you know, you get more comfortable with learning the numbers and deciding it's better. Just like we had in the special about police crews, it's the same stuff, so what, what I react to. So, overall, I think we're adding a person, uh, town lawyer.
Uh, public works, yes.
Yeah, right, so one person.
Yeah.
And that's to staff up an area that I think everybody agreed needs that staffing help. But then, we know that we're showing a lot of numbers that are higher in the aggregate than what we had experienced last year. And luckily the schools are, seem to be keeping to a realistic line, this year, last year, they got their bump up. Maybe this year we get a little bit of a bump up, but. Other than the one person, I think you, you can go through the budget and see that, for instance, on um. The select board expenses. You do provide, so we had uh, uh, basically uh thirty-nine hundred budgeted. You're gonna expend within that, that includes having spent a mail for Whittier. Next year, you're proposing another mail for, for Whittier, which we may, do not know whether it'll occur or not. And then travel and training goes up uh from zero to twenty-one hundred, so it is thirty-five hundred. All I'm saying is, as we go through this. Are we gonna wanna get back towards a six percent increase on the downside of budget or? Four percent, I mean, you know, you, you have to kind of map, budgeting is top down, bottom up, you gotta go both ways. So, I'm wondering where we're gonna find the ability to reduce this proposed budget. Where in here are we gonna find it, that's my question, we'll have some of it because of the crews are moving out, but, you know.
And the trees.
Hmm?
And the trees.
And the trees, and the trees, right, 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 so nickel and diamond isn't great, but on the other hand, neither is, neither is. Us coming in at above six percent. For the town, not, not for, not for in whole, but that, that's just a thing to keep in mind, is that there's an opportunity. To say that we'll absorb another Whittier mailing if it does occur, like we did this year, if not being budgeted for this year. Then, in some way, you gotta take the opportunity, even, even though it's slight, it's not a lot, but, you know, it's helpful to find those things that you might be able to do. Without, you know, for instance, what's the twenty-one hundred for travel and training?
Uh, it's in the event that the, first of all, it's not dedicated to travel training, it's illustrative.
Right, right.
But the, it's if uh the board members wanted to go to the MMA conference and, you know, if they were staying over down there for two nights in Boston, plus the, the conference fee, that's probably about seven hundred dollars, I did reach out to them and asked if any of them. Anticipated any travel or conference next year and none of, none of you said they did. My feeling is, you know, to budget for that, uh, but, you know, I think if you wanted to squeeze this line, you, you could.
That, that's all I'm saying, yeah, I don't want to use any specific line.
Yeah.
But, but I think that's in front of us as time around, that's all I'm saying, so, and like Jenny said. Thirty odd trees, the cruiser, you know, that's where you can make some real inroads, if you find stuff like that. I'm, I'm trying to reaffirm that, the addition of the person is not the place to go, we need that, that additional staff. But, so I, I just, you know, we're, we're kind of at the start of this process, we did DPW, DPW last week, but. Let's just see if there's opportunities to. Maybe not pencil something in that, yeah, it'd be nice to have, but, you know. Working a little bit closer back to where we started from might also make some sense, that's all.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just uh, just think about it, it, it is um relative to the overall budget. You know, this would be really nipping around the edges, um. I, you know, personal feeling is from, you know, the last, you know, four and a half years of this, um, is that it's good to have. This has been a good place to have flexibility, um. You know, the, the select board, we, you know, typically don't spend it all, but it's good to have the flexibility. For small things that come up to not have to um. Search long and far and um. Spend a lot of resources to use a little resources.
I mean, I mean, I just have a lot of resources to save a little, you know, that um.
But to the overall point, I, I, I understand your overall point, yeah, so, yeah, let, let's just. See if there's opportunities wherever they may.
Yeah, I, I guess also the select board and town manager budget often pick up the slack on other budgets.
Right, yeah, that, that is true.
Okay, so anything specific that you really feel like needs to be changed, or is this a general approach that you're?
We're, we might find an opportunity, I think we've got to have the discussion. I think, and, you know, I am concerned about what we're showing as a bottom line, and that's all.
Okay. To go to, onto the town manager?
All right, the, the most significant changes here are, one is the moving the. Uh, currently, the, the projects, programs manager currently houses DPW into my section of the budget. Uh, that's the driver, uh, the salary and wage line, um, technology change, uh, expensive enough a bit, but. Um, and then the town manager expenses, the significant changes, this year, we had, we had expended thirteen thousand dollars for the training for the uh ten uh professional development, I hadn't specifically budgeted for that, so that definitely, you know, squeezed that budget. And so I have, look, you know, I'm looking to budget for that for next year. One thing I have carried uh for a couple of years budgets is uh cost to do a mailed newsletter, I've never. Been able to do that, um, because of bandwidth issues, so uh that's something that, uh. You know, I did carry it for, you know, forty-two hundred dollars for that, so if that's something that we wanted to say, you know. I, I think there'd be room to squeeze here too, uh, because that's a level of service we have not provided. Uh, it's something I did in my last job and it was very, very effective and very uh well received, but. Uh, you know, we have a lot of the ways of getting a word out and a COA newsletter does an awesome job, so that's, you know, I think. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be averse to cutting that out of there if we were looking to, um, you know, save, save some money for the, but, bottom line. But one thing that's uh, you know, one of the big variables is the uh job ads, uh, because we've. Pretty much absorbed those costs in my budget when we post job ads, so it's not just for our hires, we do that for every job we post. And so that's something that's uh, that's driven some of the costs in the last few years.
Wait, which line is that?
Well, then the town manager expenses.
I'm just trying to see which one it is, or is it?
Uh, the North of Boston Media Group.
Okay.
I can ask that, you know, the second biggest item after the, the staff training, the second biggest number is Verizon Communications is, yeah. And I, I think that's just a fixed cost, I mean, you're, you're not gonna, you can't.
Yeah, uh, and that's, we have a couple of Verizon accounts, it's not the, it's not the cell phone plan. For, yeah. But for the, yeah, the, yeah, the fifty-eight hundred, that's like, um.
That's. Yeah, that caught my attention, yeah, that's a day like up eighty percent. From, from the budget of thirty-four hundred.
Well, again, FY twenty-four budgeted, that, that's, that is what I was carrying last year, but that's not like an approved budgeted line. That's like a ethnic going into the, end of the year. Uh, but, so that Verizon bill reminded me what that's for.
So it, that's for the town phones.
Yeah, for all the, for all the phones in the town bill line.
Yeah, phones.
Yeah, so for the town offices and library and.
Uh, yes. No.
No?
No, that, they're fine, yes.
So is that what it's been over the past several years?
Yeah.
The fifty-eight hundred or the thirty-four hundred?
Yeah, fifty, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
So this is just year to date, though, right?
Well, no, what I did was I, I took year to date and then annualized it for the remaining, the undeveloped portions. Uh, so it's a combination of the actual and for, for those things that are known like that. Uh, I think, yeah, because it's pretty much the same bill every month, so I just annualized it.
Does that include the data plan as well, for network connections?
Um, it, it does, but that's a portion, it gets charged to the IT budget, a hundred and eighty dollars or something. So, that's not part of that fifty hundred, no. So, does this reflect new phones being added? I mean, why did it double between?
It didn't double, it didn't double.
Sorry, I'm so hard.
No, no, this budgeted line is a little deceptive, this is one, when I put together the FY twenty-four budget. You know, I was, these were the numbers that comprised what I came up with, you know, I missed the mark on that one, but.
Oh.
The, the cost hasn't changed, so it's just, you know, and that's largely a function of, you know, the staffing that we have in my office, uh. And getting, you know. Yeah, so.
Well, while we're talking about phones, how is the, and maybe we talked about this last year, I just don't remember. Everybody's got a wireless number in their budget, or it looks like there were multiple brand wireless numbers allocated out to each budget.
Yeah.
Is that just a um, a stipend, or is that?
No.
Do we pay for those?
We, we pay for those, when, well, there's still a couple of people who get a stipend, but there's very little of that. Um, in the, in the time I've been here, we uh, we're much happier getting someone a phone and paying the bill. Rather than paying someone a stipend or paying someone else's bill, so for every new hire that's uh. Uh, needs a, a smartphone, we add that to the town plan and then we apportion those costs uh for that monthly bill. Gets a portion based on the number of lines.
But it's, it's all on account, right, so you get.
For the most part, emergency management still has its own account and, and there's some kind of legacy accounts, uh, just because it's very hard after the fact to. Merge, you know, accounts, uh, you can do it, it just takes more time than has been worth. Archie was big on this, he wanted to squeeze all of them together, but you need the authorized persons and. Anyway, it's, um, yeah, every account that's been, every phone line that's been added since I've been here has been on to the same account. So that account's gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, uh, but there hasn't been, uh, I think other than EMA, uh.
The water department has their own, right? They have their own cell phones. They're not cell phones, they're um. Data systems. Oh, the data. Yes, yes, yeah. And.
Good, the cell phones, there's cell phones through the data system?
No, sure.
Oh.
Charges.
Yeah.
Angus, could you give us like just a quick helicopter view of the, of this, this staff development training? And, and why it was successful and why you want to continue it, but just.
Uh, sure, the uh, so it's a, the curriculum is, uh, it's Leadership Management International. Uh, there's a trainer based in Carolina, Mass, when I was working in Westford, uh, fourteen years ago, the town manager had brought him in to do. Uh, to work with her senior staff and we, we did a ten-week uh course and it was really, really good. to work with her senior staff, and we did a ten-week course, and it was really, really good. The curriculum's great, it's, that particular one was a little different than what we've done here, which is a personal, effective personal productivity. It's a six-session course, not ten session, and it's a little bit of a different focus, but, but the curriculum's kind of a, you know, branded curriculum, and then the trainer is a management consultant, and he does this work for companies and for municipalities. And, you know, I first started talking about it a while ago, but it really became a priority last summer with the DPW restructure. Because we had a lot of new people taking on very different responsibilities. And existing people had taken on more and more responsibilities in the, in the last couple of years. I mean, just one example, we've got Christian here, he became our GI, well, he was our GI, he became like our point person for cybersecurity and managing that, and, you know, he's tech savvy and, and was willing and able to take that on. But, but it's a new thing, and there's, it's a changing thing, and in public works, we have you know, we had one individual becoming the purchasing officer, and another person, you know, a couple of other people taking on more senior roles on, on capital planning and long-term facilities management, not, not just day-to-day operations and, and oversight, so I felt I wanted to make sure that everybody who had taken on new responsibilities was really comfortable, that they understood their job, they felt they had the resources to do it. I didn't know if there might be people who like, might not want to tell me, like, oh, I'm really not sure what you expect, but I'm afraid to say something. I wanted to create an environment where people whose jobs had changed a lot had kind of a good opportunity to really like, you know, not just develop their own skills, but also develop the teamwork among the team, so.
And this would be a second round for employees that have not had.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, you know, I had the same thought as you did, but I would hate to stockgap it. You know, maybe, you know, having everybody go through this cycle, it may not be recurring in the future.
No, yeah, no, it really is a one-time thing, and it's, it, it is definitely an investment in staff. I think it's been, it's been very, very worthwhile. Every, the ten of us that participated, we all found it extremely worthwhile. Both on its merits, as well as, as a kind of a team-building thing. And it was actually kind of palpable week to week, like the, the group dynamics, just people really got to know one another's jobs a lot better. And I think it was very helpful, so.
So is it the same, would it be another ten people? It would be a smaller?
A smaller group, yeah.
So perhaps could that number be?
Well, no, because the, the per person fee is, is up. I, I got a proposal from them. So.
My gut reaction was probably also help with employee retention as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would hope so. It's, it's an investment that you, you make in, in, in people, and, you know, you may or may not. It, I, I, it certainly wouldn't hurt, I, I would think it would help with that, but, you know, it's, everyone can work where they want to work.
But, but it probably helps everybody's productivity, because everybody knows what each other are doing and appreciates what each other are doing, and are more likely to compliment each other's in, in what they're doing.
Good point.
Yeah, and, you know, before we had, he had initiated this, I've gotten the board involved with a conversation last summer or fall. We talked about it a couple of times before going forward, and I think it was a really good time and the kind of development of the organization to do that, because of all the changes that have, have taken place over the last several years on people's responsibilities. Both because of changes in our staffing structure, but also because of all the new state and federal mandates. There's a lot of things that people are responsible for that, that are, you know, there's new requirements all the time.
Any other question on that?
So we're doing which section right now?
The town manager section.
And in the town manager, we have the, for instance, the audit, annual audit?
Ah, that's in the finances, yeah.
Okay, that's in the next thing. I'm just reacting to a, a number of thirty-two thousand in, in the annual audit, as opposed to.
Yeah, what that is, so when Jenny put in her department budget, she had understood that the contract with our auditor didn't cover the current fiscal year, but it does, so the number I put in is the contractual one, that's a known amount. She had put in a higher number, thinking we were gonna have to rebid it. And we know there's been consolidation in the industry, and we know that the price we're getting is, is well below what. Yeah, but anyhow, no, that was.
Okay, so anyways, going back to where we're actually at.
Yeah. So that's where, sometimes when I put in the department backup, I wonder is that helpful or not helpful? Because there are things to change from that to my budget, which I could, and I expected someone to pick up on that and say, wait, it says this, but now you're saying that. So I could just give you my budget, I give you the backup for transparency, but that means, you know, I'm not.
I think, I think the backup's really important.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think the, the problem with the backup is it's very time-consuming to pull it together. And the way we have it doesn't necessarily, there's not a page that goes back to a line up there.
No, right, yeah, because I'm not gonna go back and change the original budget to match my budget, that's like kind of the piece of.
But, but maybe with ClearGov, it gets a little bit easier to do that or something.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna, you know, it would include, I, I mean, and, and prior budgets, we, we've included a column with the department head proposed, and the town manager proposed, so you have it right on one sheet. This year I didn't, you know, didn't take the time to do that, because we're already doing two platforms, and, you know, it's just uh, there's only so much time.
So on the line, town manager expenses, we've got no opportunity to change anything?
No, I, we, I mean, I said that, you know, we could cut out the funding, there's forty-two hundred dollars on, on doing newsletter. That, that could come out.
And the postage change because of that?
That would be embedded in, in that. So now the postage is really to do with, you know, paying the bills and just the routine postage, it's nothing to do with, with special mailings like that.
What, could we bookmark that?
Yeah.
That's an important part of what Angus wants to do.
Sure.
So if you have to take it, fine, but there's someplace else.
Right, there's someplace, yeah, I, I, that's exactly what we do, we have to bookmark it. This, this is an iterative process. In the end, we might find stuff that makes a lot more sense than that, but I'm just, I mean, I think we all feel the same way, there's an amount that you don't want to improve that, that's all.
Excuse me, Angus, I, I think I might have missed it, but are you spending the thirteen thousand in the staff trainings this year and you're proposing it for next year?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because second set of employees. Some people didn't get it prepared, really.
I have a point of question, Rob. In the past, I know we used to vote, like, you know, we say, I, I make a motion to approve the town manager's budget. As, and, and obviously we're not, it seems like we're not doing that tonight, but should we be doing that?
We can end up doing that, but at the end of this meeting, we'll take an assessment of how much, you know, I, I mean, the inspection we're having is, you know, at what point in time do we do that? And some of this stuff may be held over. Position, I would be in, facing this, is I would, I would be looking at it from a different prism. Prism, I think we've got to keep in mind is what we go to town meeting with, but, but on the other hand, we'll see at the end of the night. We could, we could very well, we could very well.
So we're not gonna like vote next meeting?
We bookmark something, so I'd say, no, I, I, I wouldn't, I mean, if we get to one like that service, they're all, yeah, let's, let's say, yeah. Right now, I think we've got to just be open to whether or not we're into some, you know, some measure of flexibility there.
But the intention to vote tonight, how long?
Yeah, I would, I would hope so, okay, I would hope so.
All right, moving on.
Uh, finance department. And again, you know, you'll see some discrepancies between the department head submitted and, and my numbers, really, because uh, the department had submitted, Dave Carricoa, mine did, that's the difference in the, in the wage number there. The significant increase in the finance department expenses is for the ClearGov software. And, you know, Jenny and I have had some discussions as to whether the, I think with the budgeting software, we want to continue to invest in that. The, I think the personnel budgeting, that's something I think, you know, we can talk more about. You know, taking a major investment of time to build out, and I mean, you know, it's, if that's one that we have to, you know, trim back, you know, we can talk about that.
So where's the software number buried in?
Uh, it's in the finance expenses, that's this, that's this, that's the major driver behind this twenty-two thousand dollar increase. We, we got, for the first year of ClearGov, we got a grant. So the grant picked up, we got a state community compact grant in September. It picked up basically three quarters of FY twenty-four and the first quarter of FY twenty-five. It picked up twelve, twelve months of the software. So we had to build in the, you know, three quarters of FY twenty-five into the operating budget, that hasn't been in the, in the current year budget.
You know, how comfortable are you feeling about the ClearGov versus the old system?
Well, it's, 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 I think, I, 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 I'll say what I'll say, you say what you say. But I think it's, the the capabilities of it are terrific. Just like any new software, it's a huge investment of time to, to build it out. I think on the, there, there's three modules that we had, there's actually four modules we had, so with the personnel budgeting, the operational budgeting, the budget, digital budget book, and the capital budgeting. The personnel budgeting Jenny's been much more involved with, has put in a huge amount of time building it out with every detail of every, you know, every stipend, every shift differential, every, I mean, every nuance of payroll, which is a lot. Uh, the operational budget, we both done a lot of work with, we rolled that out in the budget process and gave department heads the option to either key in their budgets through ClearGov or to send us their sheet in the old-fashioned way. We didn't want to do a hard push on it, because we were still learning it, so we said if people are comfortable doing it the old way, that's fine, we'll pee it in. A significant number of departments did use the ClearGov, and I think found it was very easy. I know Jim uses it, you know.
And they can see, they can see what we're importing for their expenses at the same time they do that?
Uh, well, so they, what happens, they put in their budget, it then comes to me and Jenny as the kind of.
By any ongoing basis, they, they have, they have the ability to also look into the system, so they can, they can see what they expect, they don't have to come running down to you to explain a number.
Not, not spending, because it's not an accounting software, it's a budgeting software. So it doesn't, it, it only has the year-to-date that we put in as of a moment in time, unlike the accounting software, which is a dynamic, changes every day. Uh, the accounting software is very easy to run those year-to-date reports, that takes, that takes like, you know, sixty seconds. So I think the operational budget, I think it's been good. The personnel budget is very powerful. But I'm, I'm cognizant of the amount of time it took to build that all out. And so I'm still kind of waffling over whether it's worth that time to be all into using Excel. The capital budgeting, I haven't even had time to dig into, and in, you know, the format of this budget you see up on the screen, this is Excel, because what happened was it was the weekend before, you know, I had to present my budget. And I had a choice to either, you know, I mean, we put a lot of time into ClearGov, but I, I wasn't ready to push it over to the digital budget book, because that's taking all the personnel overriding your numbers, and, and we hadn't done it. So I just, I said, you know what, I'm just gonna build out the Excel, because it took me like an hour, and that, that way I know what I'm getting. So we're still in the learning curve. I mean, honestly, we, we should, you know, going back to October, November, I should have been spending, you know, many hours a week doing trainings on ClearGov, but despite working basically a waking hour, there's no time to get trainings, and, you know, this board need that, like I told you guys, every week I should be doing trainings. I'm not, like, there's no time, we're way too busy. So, so I, I'm still, I feel like, I, you know, definitely seen it, I mean, we, we liked it in the first place, that's why we did it. It's very powerful, but we're still not, you know, we're not close to fully utilizing it, because of bandwidth, we just.
I'd like to give it a chance, I mean, I'd like to see at least one full budget cycle where we're just using it.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've mostly been using it for the inputs, but, but when it came time for me to have a budget, I could present. I just, I dropped into Excel, because I've been doing it this way for ten years and.
So you're still remain positive towards the, the ClearGov?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forgive me for my ignorance, but it, it's in the finance department operating budget, the ClearGov that we're all talking about, is that that Harper Payroll Services?
No.
No, I, I, I don't, where is it?
It's one separately. It might not be.
Yeah, it wouldn't be in Jenny's, because, yeah, it wasn't in the budget that Jenny submitted to me, and then I said, oh, we gotta here at ClearGov, so that's why her, her expense number is twenty-six, mine is forty-seven. Because she hadn't, she hadn't, hadn't put that in there, so, yeah.
Is the delta that the, the ClearGov fee?
It's twenty-one, one oh eight seventy-five, and that is with still having
The prior's were twenty-four versus twenty-six.
Yeah, so we have four modules, and they're roughly seven grand a piece, if ballpark. So it's, it's not cheap, and, and there's definitely, you know, a future scenario where we keep off-platform, but get rid of some other platform to, to cut the cost, so. I mean, I've seen, I've seen the finished product in other towns, and it's, it's very, very impressive. We haven't yet been able to deliver that here, because of time.
Right, that's why I was asking what your, that feel was.
Yeah.
It's still, you're still remain optimistic?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest, you know, I was having hope, because on the personnel budgeting, it's, it's one of the great things, it's very powerful, is you can do multiple different scenarios. So we have like a scenario that's a cola-only scenario, we have a scenario where we're guestimating what the new union contracts may be, there's, you know, you're gonna have scenarios with different things, and then you can like plug those in, and it will, you know, kind of run to the bottom line, and, and you can do that with like a couple clicks of a button. The front end of that is very time-intensive to build out all that data, but once you have that, you can, you know, analyze things and do multi-year forecasts much more easily, but, but I had hope the on importing the personnel budgeting into the operational budgeting, because I was still doing some number, some amount of calculations on Excel, especially where there's dynamics, where there's like a new position or something. And so I didn't want to override my numbers with what's in the personnel module, because they don't speak to each other until you actually press the button to import it, so, and I just didn't want to. Yeah, so it's, so, but, but, you know, on, on the, you know, the weekend report presenting the budget, and, you know, I was line by line reconciling the ClearGov data with here to make sure that everything I had in here was one hundred percent consistent with what's in there. I just had.
So, at what point will you be comfortable pushing the button?
Well, I haven't pushed it yet, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know? Yeah, yeah, it's, it's you know, it's, it's tricky.
Yeah, that wasn't like a trick question.
No, 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 but, but I mean, I was, I was thinking about it over, you know, it's, it's on my, on my list, that to do the ClearGov budget book and to get it into there, because I want to, even if it's, even if it ends up being in April and like, kind of immaterial in this process, I just want us all to see like what we're paying for, and is it worth it? Even though it really wasn't timely for this process. You know, it's, it's very impressive if we can get there, and the data's, the data's there, but it's yeah, we'd be happy to give someone a quick overview, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot to it, it's, it's not like a simple thing.
Finance committee? You guys are way over budget.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I prefer to stay at the forty myself. This is a line that is kind of for emergencies. It hasn't really drawn much activity over the past. It hasn't really drawn much activity over the past couple of years. I would still prefer Angus to stay at the forty really.
It's, it's, you know, it's your, your budget. So I don't think.
Ten, wasn't that the result of something at one of the last meetings? Or did it increase like that?
Yeah, I thought.
Well, that's what I, that's what I put in. This is to go up by ten from the current year.
Right. I thought that was like a contingency for something.
Trust me, I would use it for a couple of years. I was gonna say, we had to use it.
Now, I mean, where I got cold feet with, and you noticed.
Of course. I, I mean, there's a doubt and uncertainty about everything. I can't protect against all doubt and uncertainty. I'm begging, let us go back to forty.
It's, you're, you come to the ones that.
Back anyway.
No, no, no. Be comfortable. There are, there are reasons to have this absolutely for sure. It's the, the last resort when, when you can't find funding for something and came up. If you had to engineer something really quickly, this, the account you would go to, for instance. It's just, again, it.
The last.
You gotta, if you can't find it here, guys, I'm telling you, it's like. You gotta find someplace.
All right, is that?
I, 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 I've got one person saying yes to the left of me. I've got three others that aren't commenting. I'd love to hear it from the finance committee. Is it okay if we go with forty thousand in us? You're gonna drop all of it. No, no. So is, are we good with forty? So we're good with forty?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make that change. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next we have, uh, Town Clerk. And, uh, that's, uh, uh, pretty close to level funded budget.
Wait, we skipped assessors.
Oh, I was going by the order.
Oh, okay.
On the agenda. But you're right, actually assessors, why didn't that?
Do you want to just go right down in that order?
Are these all on the agenda?
Uh, just, yeah, once down to conservation.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So assessors, uh, you have to. The, uh.
Right. This allows them to go home earlier.
So, yeah, you've got the, uh, expense backup in there. Uh, one thing I will say on, on all salary wages, and this is kind of a global comment, all we've carried in the proposed budget is the assumed two percent COLA. We have not carried in, and for the case of the highway contract where that's a settled contract, we've included those contract terms, but we have not included anything in the budget on non-COLA adjustments. And, uh, that's actually a subject, you know, adjourned later for tonight for the, for the board to set parameters on that, but the budget you have in front of you doesn't include any non-COLA adjustments at this time.
So, um, again, I'd like to thank Christian for doing a good job of playing. Thank you. And, uh, I think, again, you know, he's shown some acumen to the budgeting process. Um, and yet still gets dropped on. So, yeah, exactly. So you can't do better than that. Um, but whatever you guys wanna look at, go ahead and look at.
I mean, it's really, when you look over the multiple years with the assessors, it's very striking how much they have cut their expenses and that's really been because they have taken more and more work in house.
Right, right.
Which is very impressive.
Which takes a great deal of initiative.
Yes.
And, and the pressure is, is what you can typically run into when you get into department. So I think Christian's done a great job.
Last year, we bought some software, some new software that you started using.
Yeah, so that's still working through the process right now.
Okay.
Um, we have the software in place and we're just calibrating it.
But why do you? Calibrating it?
What was your opinion on your house? Oh, I'm just, that's what it is. So, so calibration, it's, it's the whole assessing process is every year you're moving along.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so the calibration part is we have the software and we have it. So we're able to import all our data from our legacy software into the new software. And it all comes over and then I need to go through two thousand parcels and make sure that everything is calculated correctly and that there's probably close to like five hundred different little parts of the puzzle that I need to check in order to make sure that it comes through correctly.
Okay, so that's calibration.
Yeah.
And then.
Thank you.
On top of it, the last revaluation was in when?
Twenty twenty.
And, and so as you can imagine, the, the, the requirement is that you try to get, keep valuations as close to a hundred percent as you can.
Yes.
And you have to report to the state typically annually.
Correct.
And you said that you were hitting about ninety percent, ninety-eight percent?
I think that's what it looks like.
Right. Which is an absolute indicator that you stand on top of things. But that's the biggest thing is like, there's, everybody's got proof of the pudding and, and his is what he reports to the state and, and, and seeing you know, how the data points are actually working compared to actual sales history. So myself, I, I think he's doing great.
The annual maintenance fees that you pay? How much is, uh, for my cell?
Uh, I remember about seven thousand dollars for my software subscription to use the, uh, assessing platform. And that comes with, uh, the online portion as well, which needs to get up and running once and done calibrating.
That'll be ongoing each year, plus or minus whatever their increases are.
Correct. Um, I think we have the three-year contract to stay at that level right now, so.
So in, in the detailed, um, assessor's budget documentation that we guys put forward, thank you for that. They, 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 the bottom line has a, uh,
Sorry.
Yeah, a revaluation stipend. I, I guess the way I read that, and no quibble over that, but the way I read that is that's basically like overtime, was it an overtime, right? That's really what we're talking about. It's not really a, you know, a true stipend.
Well, so that, that amount's not carried in my budget. That's part of why I made that, the comment about, yeah, and I didn't carry any non-COLA
Yes.
adjustment. So that's, uh, kind of a separate conversation, but it's, that, that number's not carried in line.
In other words, we might have to deal with that in some other shape or form.
Um, that's a discussion for later, I think.
Okay. Discussion for later. So as to what we're looking at, uh, does anybody else have any other questions of Christian? The support?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, guys, we all good on next one?
Yeah.
So we're not bookmarking anything. So I think that indicates we're positive. But that's okay as a process. Next one?
Uh, so we talked Town Clerk. Uh, next one's for, uh, registrars. The significant increase there is really due to the. Oh, did we? Well, I just said.
I'm okay if you pass that rule.
Yeah.
So Town Clerk, can you stay around?
Uh, no, no, thank you, Christian.
Thanks. Thank you, Christian.
Uh, so, yeah, clerk and registrars. And, uh.
I don't think I can do much of anything.
To me, my, my first reaction with all the elections we have, I, I, I'm almost amazed how little the amount is frankly. I mean, it's.
It, it's.
With all the early voting, I just kind of.
Partially due to, um, use of tax work off. Um, so I mean, it doesn't kind of keep our budget.
Uh. Well, well, these like me that could work as a, yeah, okay.
Well, you can't though. You can't actually. You're specifically included in it.
So the, for example, I had, um, a couple in today who, husband and wife, and they were able to work the election all day or nine to three is how I had them scheduled. And it didn't cost me anything out of my budget.
Yeah.
It allowed them to use it as a, a work off for their taxes.
Yeah, yeah, nice, nice.
So why are you going up thirty-four percent?
Uh, because.
You borrow old people?
I, I can only utilize so many.
Right.
Um, it, it really comes down to the fact that, um, I have.
Extra elections.
I have the September election, which includes a week of early voting. I have the November election, which includes two weeks of early voting. I have, uh, counting of ballots after the election, because November is the only one I can count ballots. After the election, I can't count ballots myself. Because I remember the board of registrars and I have to make judgment calls. If there's ever a recount or anything like that. Um, and then our town election, which has going to be increasing because of mail-in vote. This year alone, we have over five hundred requests for mail-in ballots, which is more votes than we had in the last election. So.
Wow, that's pretty remarkable. That's a good thing for that.
No, no, that's a good thing. So we're at total registrars or is that what we're doing? A total clerk?
Uh, registrars.
Registars. So any other questions about registrar?
I, I do have another one. Jim, I remember from prior years, um, you, you were able to get some type of a reimbursement, I remember from either the state or the federal government. I can't remember. But, but now, so these numbers that we're looking at, is that net of that reimbursement or is that?
No, so, uh, a good example is I get a, what do we call it, Chen? Um, the state mandates that we have to be open from seven AM to eight PM. So we get a small little stipend, four hundred dollars or something like that.
So the extended polling was four hundred dollars?
Thank you. Um, so I get four hundred dollars that I can use to pay for things, but I do not get money for the early voting. That gets reimbursed directly to the general fund. So the state gives us reimbursement for the early voting, but I have to expend it before we.
Yeah, we still have to include it in the expense budget, even if there's offsetting revenues coming in.
It's the same thing with the mid-year budget that we increased over for October. I had to spend the money before they gave us the reimbursement, which I don't believe they figured us yet, but I did get a phone call clarifying some of my costs that I was able to justify very well. Uh, and so we'll be getting that reimbursement, I hope, uh, within the next month or so. But again, that will go directly into the general fund.
So it's basically a turnback that becomes free cash.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Uh, no, because. No, it becomes a revenue that then goes to free cash, but it still hits the expense budget.
Okay.
Uh, because you can't expend funds out of a revenue budget. So the revenues are coming into the revenue line.
Okay.
You still have to spend, have to gross cost out of that.
Yes, a one-time mislaying is fine.
Yeah.
So we good?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. Uh, next one's insurance and bonds. And this is, uh, in, in prior years, we projected much more significant increases in this one, but uh, this year, due to our, uh, really low utilization of our property casualty insurance, we actually got a letter from our insurer a couple of months ago guaranteeing us a zero percent increase for FY twenty-five on property casualty, workers' comp and public officials liability, which are the major amounts of our insurance. So I'd say they carry those at, at a zero percent. Uh, and that, uh, you know, I think the, the two-twelfth that I projected is, um, uncomfortable. That's a, you know, sufficient number. Um, it's been, this is something I think, uh, we've, we've always actually been pretty much right on the mark with insurance budgeting, but it's not one of the ones that's, uh, it's not that simple, uh, because there's over the course of the year, there's any number of plan changes. You know, you replace a vehicle, get a new vehicle. We get, you know, we get small little bills. We get credits that reduce the amount. Uh, so there's a, some ins and outs on that, but I think over the, uh, years, we've done a pretty good job of, of being very close to the mark and not over, uh, budgeting that, that section. But you can see that the major drivers are, you know, it's really just a handful of policies. Uh, we do carry a couple of policies outside the, the towns. Uh, insure for both the soldiers' sailors building and the recreation building next to the page school. Uh, my, uh, will not, uh, insure buildings that are not occupied. So those buildings, we have uh, separate insurance through, like, Lloyd's of London.
You guys good?
Yeah. Uh, legal counsel, I've probably put in a lot more detail than anyone ever.
Character. I like the charm especially.
Well, so, so we started this a few years ago and right, right when, uh, McCarron retired, uh, we knew going to outside counsel for the first time in the towns, you know, and, and however long McCarron and, and Larry Murphy had been here, you know, town hadn't been paying for town council. And I, you know, we certainly knew that. So that's a cost driver in some towns. So starting right from the first month that we signed a contract with KP, I've started putting together, you know, this with Jenny. Every month we key in the invoice and it's gotten more and more sophisticated over the years where we now do this kind of breakdown to help the board understands and, and my office, uh, what's driving the costs between the different categories of legal support.
Definitely on the track down. You can see that.
Yeah, I mean, but then, I mean, that's what I thought. And then, you know, you can see November, uh, you know, September and, and October of this year, you know, eighty-four hundred, ninety-four hundred. We know exactly why that was. There's very specific things going on that drove those costs. But, but those were a couple that, you know, those two months, I, I talked to the board at the time and said, you know, really gotta keep an eye on legal. Uh, and, uh, but every month they, they get, every time we get an invoice, I do an updated version of these and give it to the board so that they really have their finger on the pulse of, of the legal bills. And then they also get the invoices. Uh, those we don't share broadly because they have, they're, they're quite detailed. Every, every, uh, time slip is quite detailed. And so, you know, there's, we wouldn't release those without certain redactions. Uh, but, but that gives the board like, you know, elects front seat, uh, kind of what's driving the legal bills. Cause the town council reports to the board. They're appointed by the board. They report to the board. The town has one legal council. Um, and, uh, and that's under the oversight of the board. So.
Uh, Inheriton Heath, uh, for, that's because, um, the KP represents Newburyport for the whole Middle Street Bridge thing, right?
It's actually, the initial impetus for that was water rights and our interest in negotiating.
With New Water.
Newburyport. And, and the reason was because at that time KP represented both.
That's right.
But also Harrington Heath, while KP is, is very good at a lot of different things and, and I know that environmental lawyers were very good. Harrington Heath is one of the top tier kind of water rights environmental law in, in the state. So the, the board about, uh, what, about fourteen months ago did an RFQ for specialized, uh, council on water specifically. And got seven proposals interviewed. I think you interviewed three firms.
Yeah.
And, and selected, uh, it was Myers and Harrington. They just changed their name to Harrington Heath, but, um, that's really very focused on water rights and our, our long-term interest in getting a better deal with Newburyport.
But it's not solely about Newburyport.
Not solely about Newburyport, but it is all about water.
Right. It's all about water. That's the significant thing. You know, you, you don't know what you're gonna get involved in.
Yeah, yeah.
Mostly Newburyport, yes, but not necessarily all.
Angus, or man, you were mentioned before, do you have like a benchmark for what other towns our size pay for legal services or do they have a staff like we used to have with the?
I've never heard of a town having in-house legal counsel, other than cities that may have a city solicitor on staff. Other than that, I've never heard of a town even like five times to ten times our size having in-house counsel. I, I think it's extremely rare. Uh, and probably for, for a lot of reasons. So, uh, most towns have outside counsel. So, or, um, I don't have a benchmark. Uh, that would be, yeah, it would be interesting to get.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see.
Haverhill actually couldn't even find someone to come on as their legal counsel. So they had to go to outside firm. Now, that's just anecdotal. They weren't able to find something to be able to handle the amount of things.
So just recently, right, the, you know, previous council.
Yeah, it's gonna be, you know, I, I mean, that, that would be, I'm sure that would be interesting and I could definitely get those numbers from my colleagues at the region. I don't know how relevant it is because what drives the costs are, are hyper-specific, just like they are in every town. Uh, you know, there's some amount of costs associated with preparing for a town meeting and going to town meeting that are probably pretty common across towns, but you know, when you get into litigation or, or, uh, you know, personnel matters or. You know, when you get into litigation or or uh you know, personnel matters or even land acquisitions, uh. You know, it's so, so specific, uh there have been, you know, when you see spikes in different. Especially in the different categories, uh like I look at those and and get like post-trauma because they remind me of of, you know. Some of what was going on in that time, when when we have been, you know, um. You know, actively engaged with with all kinds of different things, so.
A really good example is what Wendy talked about with the CRs and dealing with that, that was a huge.
Yeah, so that's one thing actually that did drive some significant cost in those, that October-November timeframe was working on the. Uh conservation restriction for the Samuel Brook property. And that went through multiple rounds of revision and, you know, it it costs, you know, thousands of dollars of legal and. Uh we had asked the question, could that be paid from CPA funds because it was acquired with CPA funds? And the answer is, it could have if it had been included in the article proposal. But the article proposal was based on the exact amount of the purchase and sale. Greenbelt encourages legal costs, they do a lot of work, our costs would be much higher if Greenbelt wasn't doing what they're doing, but we still need our owners to review it. And uh so our takeaway from that was that going forward, and Wendy made this point earlier, for future land purchases, we want to carry some amount.
Yeah.
So that those costs are paid by CPA, but you can't do it after the fact.
Yeah.
You've looked into the possible using administrative.
Yeah, the CPA administrative fund, it seemed like a an obvious thing, but the Department of Revenue Guidance is is specific, you can't use that for a. Relative to a specific project unless it was uh budgeted.
That makes a lot of sense though, overall, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing we're doing is um. Like the Affordable Housing Trust has money, instead of the town paying legal bills for the trust, the trust should use its own money. It's like we also has a fund that we use to support residents in need and, you know, have them pay the legal. Have that fund pay the legal costs instead, so, I mean, we are actively trying to manage this and.
Yeah.
Apportion costs where they belong, instead of just hitting the tax.
But now all that up, because that's essentially, you know, three, three chunks out of, I mean, you could probably break it down to, you know, eight or ten chunks, and that's three of them that will be.
Coming, you know, from from a. Another source. Especially with the CPA, that makes a lot of sense too, because that's money that's kind of available, let's call it that.
Okay. So, yeah, so that's all, I mean, I think, I think we're at a good number with legal, but uh. Uh we just wanted to elaborate a little bit, since it is a, you know, still relatively recent that that even been in the operating budget, so. So, but if there's no more questions on that, I think the next thing we had was health insurance. And I included the. Uh worksheet that we use where we take out of the headcount and. It's uh, it's pretty handy, because once we get, basically Kate and Gilbert, who is the primary benefits administrator. She puts in all the headcount, who's in what family plan, individual, and then. You know, I I designed this so you just change the percentage and it kind of runs to the bottom line and. Breaks out general fund and water and it's 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 worked worked out pretty well, I use the same same system up. Built it up north, it's a good idea, so. It's allowed us to be pretty precise with our insurance budgeting, we do carry. As you can see, we do carry uh. You know, not a small amount of contingency, the combined amount is uh, you know, over. Sixty thousand dollars. Uh and that's in the event that. Someone who's not on health insurance now leaves and we hire someone new July first and they're on a family plan, for instance, or. You know, someone gets married mid-year, goes from the individual family, so, you know, you you definitely gotta carry some contingency. That's, you know, if you look at the turnbacks in this one, which I know you don't have that in front of you, but we could provide that. I think this is something we could trim the contingency there, um. Um and I think if you look back at the last few years, we have turned back pretty consistently. A lot of what we've carried as contingency, so I think that's something to to rock to earlier's point. Uh you know, we could definitely charge our pencil on that one and and just understand that if we do have a situation where there's a significant change. Uh you know, just to. Our headcount or who's on what plan, you know, we might need to come for a reserve fund transition.
We got forty grand in the funny.
Yeah, yeah, but that's one, I mean, you know, I I definitely, I mean, I wouldn't want to trim it down to to the bone, but. But it's got sixty grand of contingency, so that that could definitely be cut significantly. And I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't lose any sleep over that. Uh this is, so it's page uh twenty-five of this packet, so I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about, because I know you have. And there's a lot of numbers here, which doesn't need to be, but, so right here down at the bottom, so everything flows down to. Kind of exactly what the plans, the costs are, and then I carry. So we, we did carry, this is part of where we carried. Health insurance for a new DPW person, so if that person is hired and they're on a family plan, that's covered here. So that's about twenty-one and a half thousand of the contingency. And then I carried one other uh non-union family plan, which is if if someone. Not on insurance, you know, joins insurance July first, uh. And then I carried two, if there's someone who is on an individual plan and gets married and goes to a family plan, so. That's, that's a fair amount of. Like, those three things could all happen and we'd be fully budgetable, so I, like I said, I wouldn't have any heartburn if we. Took this sixty-one thousand dollars and, you know, as long as we budget properly for the new DPW position.
So that's about twenty-one?
Yeah, it's about twenty-one, but but that assumes uh. Let's see, so for the union, the the town share is about nineteen, nineteen-two for the year. For the non-union, it's about uh. Twenty-two and a half to twenty-three and a half, depending on which which.
These are new numbers, I guess?
Yeah.
What was impressive to me on this chart was the very top one, you just scrolled through the two, only a two point two percent.
Yeah.
Rate increase, that's, you know, in in the days of how much healthcare was going up in the past.
That's very good news this year, but Angus, I appreciate that you. Might be able to shop in your pencil there, because I I think, again, we all know why.
Yeah, 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 I I would not be averse to. Cutting that in half, you know, from sixty down to thirty.
So we in agreement on that then?
But yeah, yeah.
It was gone from sixty to thirty, you've already accounted for.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's really only ten.
They only have ten of that, which doesn't even cover, well, does cover one. One individual family plan transition, but that's.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of playing, you know, it's playing, playing the odds, like uh. Because you could just as easily have someone who's on a family plan who. You know, you know.
Right.
We all know what you meant, but. So what do we got on?
I have one observation, I just want to make before we get to the bottom. It's sort of peaceful back up a little bit, the thing that caught my attention was the number of people that opt out. It's like almost half.
Thank goodness, huh?
Well.
Yes.
But we're paying the opt-out fee, right? It's like.
Fifteen hundred for 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 a family plan, seven fifty for an individual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is great, you know, it just. It covers it, I was thinking, is if you increase that opt-out fee, would more people take it? To do so, or?
I doubt it, I I think it's people who, you know, who have a spouse.
It's people who aren't in the fortunate position.
Yeah.
And a lot of places don't offer the opt-out, so you can't count on a whole bunch of other people being helped there for us.
The board did increase it, it was, it was uh six hundred and twelve hundred, and then the last time it was renewed. They look at it every, every three years, they adopt basically an opt-out policy. And uh the last time they renewed it, which I think was about a year and a half ago, it went from uh six and twelve to seven fifty, fifteen hundred, so a little bit better. Up north, you know, people got an opt-out that was like six or seven thousand a year, uh which seems a little. So this always struck me as a little lean, but it is something instead of nothing, and I I think we're hearing complaints about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a thought, but yeah, I don't, I don't know that you'd wanna um. In this budget cycle, increase it a whole lot, unless you increase it a whole lot, I don't think it will make a difference to people.
I mean, you probably have to find the balance point where you would figure out, okay, if if you increased it.
When?
When would, how many would? Drop out of the panel?
Yeah, hard to figure out that sensitivity without actually doing the test, and the cost of that test could be pretty, could be great or could be really bad.
Thanks for that.
I mean, you could survey staff, right? Say, you know, if it was higher, would you be interested?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we're at thirty, is that the consensus?
Well, I wonder if we'd be better off. Going down to forty and leaving a little more margin there, because we really have.
Yeah, 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 let's agree on the terms first, so we know which which direction we're moving.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, going down.
I'm I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable if it's not the full thirty.
Yeah, yeah, as as Jenny said, trim it by twenty.
But I I I I do think this is, you know, like Angus was saying earlier, tracking. How much. Buffalo we have historically is very useful, which we do, and and I appreciate, you know, the offer to go thirty, but. I I think twenty is great, I mean, I'm I'm happy with that myself. Guys, what do you think?
Yeah, I I agree.
Okay, so, you know, fist bump. Yeah, you know, some other educations and support, so.
I think e- even with that, it's still, it's still a pretty conservative, meaning a state number, uh because. You know, if you hire a new DPW person, they come in and they they do the individual plan on the blue cross instead of the teachers' plan.
Yeah, much is better.
That's, yeah, so much is better, so. Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if if this works a normal year, and you get a two point two percent increase, we wouldn't even be worrying about it, because. You know, the thing about turnbacks is, I I I actually don't like the term turnback, because none of this money actually belongs to anyone and. You know, they still have to go through a process of spending it properly and, you know, within their authority and stuff like that. But we gotta remember that every time we do one of these budgets, we are trying to drive a surplus. The biggest thing is driving a surplus of a certain size, so that we can re, you know, recharge. Free ca- cash, recharge stabilization funds and stuff like that, so in. In a normal year, it 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 makes some sense to have cautious estimates about health insurance. This year is different because of what you're showing overall, so Angus, thank you very much.
Sure.
So we're good on the twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that brings us to the end of the the operating sections for tonight.
Have we, have we covered everybody?
Yeah.
So we covered each one of those items?
We covered IT, there's that.
That's part of town manager, but the questions on that is, it were.
There was a one IP projects page?
Or?
Yes, yeah.
The fee. The fees that you have there?
Yeah, this one here, yeah.
Yeah, so in in there.
What page is that?
It's page twelve.
Thank you.
So in there, there's. The rule of switches and the access points. That's Wi-Fi. So, so the building has Wi-Fi, I mean, you're already, right?
Yeah, it's just not, everybody's using it, it's. No, it's not, it doesn't cover the whole building, uh you, but. Yeah, you you need the repeaters, but the current one we have doesn't cover the whole building.
Okay. And then the Apple Tree Networks?
That's Jay.
Oh, that, okay, yeah. So he does all the, he's here every day?
No, he's here every Wednesday.
Oh, just one day?
But he literally, I've never not gotten an email back from within twenty-four hours.
Yeah, no, he's 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 right, in fact, I was in a couple of Saturdays ago and the network was down, and I texted him and he was here in twenty minutes on Saturday, so. Now, he he's always available, but no, he he's only in the building uh one day a week.
Okay.
As part of his regular job.
And does a great job. We should tell him, right?
He does a great job, I don't think, I don't think he watches these meetings.
I thought you said, I thought you said you did some. Some work to gussy them up or something, no?
No, Adam, that's Adam.
Okay.
Yeah. Adam also does it.
Okay, great, that's. So Dan, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I've got is. Three items that we agreed are going to go down. Forty-two hundred, ten thousand, twenty thousand.
What was the forty-two?
I think that newsletter issue, you said you were gonna bookmark it.
No, okay, so I thought you were more positive about being able to drop the forty-two hundred.
I I'm okay with that, I just, but what you said was bookmarked.
Okay, so we bookmarked, so I'm trying to go through three items I I just heard. Forty-two hundred, ten thousand, twenty thousand. And and what what I might suggest is if if that's. It whichever ones we agree to, which I think the tens are done deal, the twenties are done deal, I guess the forty-two hundred, what then? I don't take great notes like two of those, but uh. You know, it may be that the thing that should be changed is the um water mountain submitted to us. We can do that too, Angus, right? So in elements, uh the the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, whatever amounts we're agreeing to change down with. Uh we might, we might change the draft in there.
Angus, forty-two hundred on the newsletter. Um the goal, which I know there hasn't been family for was for a couple of years?
Well, and and I, that would cover about one.
That would cover.
Yeah, yeah, and I had uh.
Originally, it was much more on there, right?
Yeah, like eight, eight thousand, yeah. Yeah, and that was intended to cover printing, postage.
Okay.
But, you know, I do think we. You know, we developed a lot of great ways to get the word out, so I. Yeah, I think. I mean, I will say, just if if you look at the newsletters I did in my prior job. They were really exceptional and people loved them, but. You know, it's, there's, I mean, we have to do them here, so.
Or this year, for this this year is the the year you.
Yeah, yeah, and I also think that that where we have an open town meeting form of government and about thirty boards, commissions and committees. Who are highly engaged and coming into this building all the time, we didn't have that at my last job, it was a council form of government. A lot fewer citizens, so that was really a great way to get people informed here, we have. People come to town meetings, so so I mean, I do think it it's a great thing, but I I I'm fine if it's removed, I I don't have.
That being said. If I could make a point, I I think we we saw how well received the Whittier postcard was. And maybe we want to do something like that for a special town meeting.
Well, maybe we do, maybe we want to do a lot of things, Jeff.
No.
I don't want to go town meeting showing this level of increase, Jeff, I really don't.
It's a lot of money. But I'm making the suggestion is maybe we might need it for something like that, because we have struggled to get a warrant, especially at the meeting.
We can take it out of the. Fincom.
We would gladly take it out of the Fincom, if they needed it.
But I, my 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 suggestion is maybe if we can hold bookmarks, you know, if we've ever.
Say.
And we got ideas about things, so it's forty-two hundred dollars.
Sure, um, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, I can only, I only know myself as an A point, because I don't. Pay attention to what other people defend there, and, you know, I think probably. I don't think it was, I probably never more informed at all than here to myself.
So um what if we cut down the select board, um. Well, I guess that just comes in, comes under expenses, the travel.
Yeah, it's not separately itemized, but.
So you think you need four hundred?
No, no, I probably don't, that was the year where I went to the animated thing, I stayed down there for the night and 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 uh, yeah. And uh, other than that, I, you know, I've gone to, I mean, that was probably one time that I that I did. I don't even know if it was that much, um and uh.
Uh so can we take two thousand? Uh, so can we take two thousand on that?
Yeah, we'll send it.
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-one or four?
Oh, it was twenty-one?
I thought it was.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
That was expensive.
Yeah, I I don't know, but, you know, it's hard to project what might happen, but, I mean, there wanna be, at least, it seems to me there wanna be at least a thousand there. And I don't know if we've ever used that much, but um but.
What do you think, Angus?
Uh, it's it's no issue because, uh, you know, it doesn't prevent you from going to conferences, it just means if you do, there's gonna be less to do. And we've been able, like you you said earlier, one or both of you said, if something has come up, that you need to do a property survey, that you wanna do a a postcard or you wanna, you know. We've been able to, it's kind of been the board's budget to to, you know, be able to do those things and not, um, and they're all you know, relatively small dollar things. Um, I don't think a thousand dollar, I don't think you'd bet that, honestly, yeah.
Yeah, I just think we oughta.
At least.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't, I don't have, and and same as you said, I mean, there there is, you know, we, you know, the 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 small things, fifty, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars that we cover, that it isn't, you know, there's always been probably a little bit more than we've used, but you never know what little things can come up, it's impossible to tell twelve months out what what.
Right, you can't, you really can't budget to that.
Right, right, so, but a thousand dollars or eleven hundred, what is it, twenty-one? So we're gonna take eleven hundred dollars out now, I think.
Okay. All right, that's the plan, are we, want to tackle articles or?
So so what did we end up saying on the forty-two hundred, that's my question?
Uh, I I.
We took it out, but I think we wanna revisit it next year when you have more time.
Yeah, and it also doesn't preclude, I mean, let's say we did a, I could do a postcard for a fraction of that class and say, hey, check out the town projects page, here's the link, something, you know, something like that, so.
Or or as you go through the year, you gotta remember, the opportunity is always there throughout the year, Jen, correct? To end up finding out that you're running well to budget and so they, it makes some sense to say, why don't we go and do this? How we sat out the year isn't necessarily how we ended, but, you know, I, like Chris has voiced, I think, you know, we have to be a little bit cautious about what we're presenting at the town meeting. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, yeah, I think in the articles, we had a.
Where are we, what page are we going to?
So page twenty-seven is the uh of the packet, is the one that has the uh, it's like seven articles that were penciled in for tonight. Uh, and the first of those is it's just, it doesn't even need action because you already, well, actually, it does need action, you didn't actually vote it by that. Pension liability, we just made the adjustment to go from ten percent to eleven and a half percent. Uh, and we, you know, that was, uh, at the fifteenth meeting, that was, we just needed to confirm that amount with Jenny, done that, that's this one thirteen six seventy-three. The pension liability.
Yeah, so remember, what we're trying to do is fund the stabilization here. And in funding it, then what we do is we're able to moderate the increases in the out year. So the Essex is going up six percent in the expenses every year. And and what we end up doing by eventually drawing from the stabilization is we increase by two percent every year. Which, you know, this goes back to discussions we had last year. The biggest thing is we're earmarking into the stabilization fund so people can count on that money and then it comes out, so we're just basically lowering the hit that we would other otherwise take. And that's in that spreadsheet that Jenny does. That's the whole concept behind here, is is get move some free cash over stabilization, then we stop pulling it out, or I think you said we stopped pulling it back out.
That makes sense.
Yeah. In the end, we get to twenty thirty-five and we've got a relief of a million dollar a year, and that's essentially what we're doing is making our expense limited to a billion dollars per year where it actually would go up to like one point two or or something like that. I mean, it's it's really kind of to me a mind-blowing number, but it's the best we can do, and luckily you guys had set a policy of ten percent. The the reason we did the schedule is we wanted to track and make sure that ten percent was adequate, what we're proposing is we've really gotta opt it a little bit to keep on schedule to the two percent increase to the taxpayers. And you gotta remember, this is expenses that should have been incurred a long time ago. In a way, our free cash is overstated because we shouldn't have had that money available because it should have been going to an increased pension way back. By way back, I mean, sixty and seventy, that's the idea. Correct, Angus?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
Is this?
Yes, yeah.
Is this gonna be just a one-time adjustment to about an half percent or is it?
No, no, this this is going going forward, going forward, this, this only, I mean, so the reason numbers are changing isn't because of them, it's because we did not know last year when we came up with the schedule what are going forward, where it really was. And and when they came out this year, I went back and looked. And and as Jenny and I have both gone back and looked, and we're really comfortable that the rate that we should have been using is the current rate of one point nine six. It's it's always been in the one point nines, last year went to one point five two, that that's just basically much the schedule. So, you know, that's a reason, again, it's, if you wanna compensate out, liar of ten percent.
Yeah.
You have to, yeah, it's it's just, it's just, it's math, it's pure math, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Does select word vote first in the article and then?
So so I'm not clear, so the motion now is going to be um to transfer the, this amount of one thirteen six seventy-nine?
Six seventy-three, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, yeah, so I moved them, we transfer funds to pension liabilities uh stabilization fund of one thirteen six seventy-three.
All right, second. All favor?
All right.
I make a motion to um to transfer to the pension liability fund one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars if my act share.
I know, I did the same thing. Did you get it right, Stan? Did you get it right?
That's fleeting.
Or rather, whatever whatever the post, make sure he agrees, it agrees, that's kind of feeling. Second, do we have a second?
Second.
So Dan, seconded, all in favor? It is unanimous, five people voting in favor, thank you very much. This is so painful, the pension is so painful, it's like replacing a roof, you get no joy in it at all, zero joy.
It's only true if you weren't sitting under the drap.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, you know, it's not, like, you don't, you know, it it's not as fun as other things, okay.
And how many, Rob, they do the rationale though.
Rob does the rationale.
You know, I don't have a choice.
I've been assigned.
I'm told, you're very appropriate.
All right, amendments to the finance committee.
Actually, next one's the OPEC transfer.
I thought we already voted.
So we did, but but Jenny had correctly uh pointed me to a there was a discussion with our actuary in the fall. And she had talked about a an annual amount of twenty-five-five. I hadn't remembered that, I had come up with this and and as a function of our current deficit, and Jenny had pointed that out after uh that had gone through. And we did actually, at that time, commit to the actuary that we were gonna do that and I had just forgotten out of mouth, so I I put this on so we could reconsider.
So this number, the twenty-one five eight six, should actually be twenty-five?
Twenty-five-five, yeah, and that, and and the idea, that was like through twenty thirty-six or some long period of time. She felt, the actuary felt that was the, that was kind of the the level set number, so. She, we had uh talked to her about coming in to present that this past fall, uh but that wasn't part of the scope and and she gave us a quote and it was, it was not inexpensive uh to have her come present to a meeting, so we opted not to do that.
Right.
That's like part of why I forgot about it, because.
But do- doesn't this also go against, doesn't the state kind of maintain the 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 level they expect us to be at? And so when you, when you do this, you're gonna end up showing a rate of ninety-eight percent, ninety-six percent, something like.
Yeah, so we're.
Something in the top five, something in the top five in the state, so she's just, she's just reminding us that it's better to not let it slide.
Yeah, yeah.
Or or rather, don't be like Newbury Ford, who hasn't put a dime in for this. Um, but anyway, so.
We're being recorded, Rob.
You know, they don't listen to us, so.
So, yeah, so I would, I would ask for a re- re- consideration with the amount.
Okay, so I, so I I moved to revise the number that had previously been used for uh OPEC uh stabilization fund. And that we instead transfer uh twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to the postal employment benefits stabilization fund.
Second, all favor?
All right. So we're we're gonna open to actually a question. Yeah, I have a question. On the OPEC fund, that's managed externally and is part of the?
PIRAC?
What's it?
Does PIRAC go?
No, it's it's a part of the um.
Capital, not a capital.
Yeah. But it's made up of funds that are more commercially marketed and active and they have, they're more. They have much better returns than the.
Right, exactly.
The front funds. So even though that OPEC fund had better returns and better paybacks and better contributions and growth, we're raising it based on this actuary recommendation, but I never heard the basis for the recommendation.
So there were a couple of years where they had significant losses, though, and I think that was kind of what brought us down to being like less than, I don't know, thirty percent. But this was in her, in her um figuring, going for the process of the uh revaluation in order to keep our discount rate. This was what the board, um, they asked the board to agree to, to keep our discount rate at where it was.
Okay, and it's not really an expenditure fund, it's a, it's a, it's a transfer over to stabilization fund, so. Right, so it's just a different fox. Right, but if we keep doing this, eventually, I don't, I don't know who we're gonna keep doing.
Well, no, the the expectation is to transfer the same amount for at least the next ten years.
Ten years?
Well, I think it's twenty thirty six.
But, you know, if there is.
Oh, no, no, if we modify the financial, provide these contribute for through twenty sixty-one. Yeah, quite a while.
But you can see that, it could change if.
It's gonna change every year.
Right, so, you know, that's just.
You've been a young guy, like Jim will be retired by then.
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to figure out the.
So so what we're gonna need, what we're gonna need as a finance committee is if we get us the documentation behind us so we can have a future conversation.
Well, it's it's in, I heard Jenny. But, but we can send the full actuarial report.
Exactly, right, so.
But but the email where she set out this amount is is in the material.
No, no, that's fine, but but we're.
Oh, it's in there.
It's in the tag, it's in.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine.
The full report.
No, just the exact.
I'm asking for the the full report.
I'm sure.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was.
And we'll take it up at some point in the future when we all have a lot more time.
Great.
Okay, good enough?
That's fine.
Good, it's just.
Are you voting or not?
Oh, yeah, we we, have we done all that questions?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm I'm making a motion to see if the town will transfer from available funds in an amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to the other postal employment benefits OPEC stabilization fund.
Second.
Dan seconded, any more discussion, hearing none, all in favor, it's unanimous, thank you very much.
Yeah, I. Yeah.
It's a thing.
It's, but this one, because of the nature of the article, we don't have sunset dates.
No, because we make the transfer and.
Got it, got it.
We assume, Jen.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you write it last year?
Yeah.
No, you talked already, that was the last time you voted, the number you was on, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, I just wondered if you'd voted last year.
And it did, yeah, thank you. Next one is the uh FinCon bio amendments.
This proposal just is, well, I can read through the summary there. Basically, the impetus from this is that the state does allow you to set forms based on number of people actually appointed, not a fixed number. That might be inappropriate if, for instance, you didn't have enough people in need of quorum. So that's one aspect of it. Um, I think also it covered having a vice chair and then.
Secretary.
Huh?
That means vice chair and secretary.
Right, well, the secretary was already named. Did you want to show the uh?
Sure. Page forty-four.
Thank you. I love page numbers.
So why are you deciding to stay with six? But.
Because I couldn't get the committee to go to five.
Why?
Same thing I said, thank you. Why not five? Guys, I mean.
I've never heard.
We weren't even that hard. Ross would say yes, by the way.
About this.
Yes, we talked about it, yeah.
We've six months ago?
Well, last year we were talking about going to five, but you guys weren't convinced by my my explanation, so I left it at six thinking that, I mean, if they wanna go to five, that's fine. Still, no, the language should always be, a majority of those then serving, that's how, that's how the state asks, well, they they recommend you handle it that way, you don't have to handle them.
So for a committee of five, it's three.
It's great, yeah, it's great, like you would expect.
Makes sense. So.
Got it, maybe someone isn't able to make it, someone's sick.
Well, we've been, as you know, we've been struggling with that, I mean, we we've had to really, really be cautious about one of those meetings.
And the other thing that's changed is the appointment to any type of a school district advisor.
Right, so for instance, we've recently been talking, and that's a regional, about reinstating an advisory committee, of course, that's gonna die of death, I'm sure, but uh but then there's also a discussion, the same thing, so right now, there's limitations as to where a FinCon member can serve investment committee, C I C. And this would just allow for, if there is a regional school uh advisory committee, some of them might in fact name a finance committee member. Or the select board may decide that it's prominent to have a finance committee member. So Whittier put something, if if there was something for Whittier put in place, and and a call for two members from each town, you could like, you know, so it allows you to to do something that's a little different than what the current dialogue is.
So those are the only changes?
The only change is.
Tell without the red, we have to teach you how to redline, Mark.
I do redline, I don't, I I don't use it because I don't wanna recraft it. Uh, the only other thing that changed was there was a phrase in there that said um, you'll come on every one article, especially, and it's like, you know, especially those that are financial, it's like, well, you're commenting on everyone. I mean, white collar, well, I should say, but like, like, it's like more perfect union. So if it's perfect, you don't need it more perfect, but that that's a phrase that was dropped.
The other minor change was a, a, in the old document, it said uh that they shall need at least ten days prior to the annual.
Well, it was, yeah, the 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 way they were describing, I mean, ten days before town meeting is when we are required to get together.
He's kidding, get this all. That was only, that was efficient.
I'd be better, I'd be better than that.
That was back in the efficient days.
Yeah, yeah. So that that basically was just trying to describe how how you, it it just sets it one month prior to, which is what we've been doing anyways, that all those things down there are really more about what actually goes on than what was any, like Jim says, there were, there were things that just, you know. If 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 someone cited them as a reason for doing something, you'd be shit out of life, you wouldn't be able to have a town meeting. than what was any, like Jim says, there were, there were things that, that just, if, if, if someone cited them as a reason for doing something, you'd be shit out of life, you, you wouldn't be able to have a town meeting.
Ron, I will support five members if we strike the secretary position.
Oh, have you had to worry about that?
No, it's, it's a cost of concern.
You, you don't, don't worry about.
What do you need a secretary for? What even does a secretary do?
Right, well, the minutes theoretically.
That's not gonna happen, right?
Yeah.
Are you doing the minutes?
I, no, I'm not.
What are you guys doing?
Huh?
You guys do the minutes great now anyways.
Yeah, I, I know, but, but.
I think that's a good deal, strike the secretary and get five members.
Well, five members, I agree, but, but strike the secretary doesn't.
That, that's what you have to do to get, I mean, I'm still buying.
I, I would look to James about that, I don't care, I mean, to me.
It's not necessary.
Okay, strike secretary.
Is it not, does technically not need?
No, you can assign each meeting to a different person to do.
Okay, there you go, we'll assign it to Ross to start. No, I'm fine with that, I just, I just presumed that, that there was a rule, because it was there.
That's kind of an arcane thing.
I'm, I'm with you, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
All right.
I, I really had a question. Just talk a little about the whole all articles versus all financial articles.
And where is that?
It's, it's in the third line at the bottom.
Okay.
And uh, you know, I know this has changed, obviously, with different composition of the FinCon um.
Not the requirement in.
No, 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 but the practice. Yeah.
You mean, the prior finance committees ignored the bylaw?
Chose not to recommend them.
Oh, I know.
Non-financial articles.
I know, I.
Yeah, that was.
I wanted.
For sure, that was the case.
Yeah, I'm sure there were people that derelicted the duty, yeah, I'm sure of that.
What's your thinking on it?
So my thing on it is, especially with regard to things like zoning bylaw amendments, um you know, the planning board is charged by statute with certain things, they have public hearings that are required by statute, and when they bring a bylaw amendment, you know, like, depending on, they've often been working on it for many, many months, sometimes years, sometimes hundreds of hours of time. Same thing with something like the Wetlands bylaw, uh the finance committee, first of all, I think it's a, a big burden to put on a committee to get up to speed on things that are uh, you know, don't have a dollar sign, I know people say everything has a financial impact, I, I don't disagree with that, I don't know how productive it is to debate that, but it's not spending money, and I guess my concern is both, you're looking for uh, you know, a citizen committee, volunteer committee to that's already absorbing a huge amount of information between the operating budget and all the financial articles to also make an informed recommendation on every policy decision the town makes. And part of my concern is um take, for instance, zoning articles where the planning board, that's really their responsibility by statute to have those public hearings. Let's say there's an instance where they come to a recommendation, the finance committee comes to a different recommendation. You know, I'm not saying the planning boards, oh, I, but they've, they're kind of statutorily vested with that responsibility of having those hearings and in the event that, you know, nothing about the current composition of FinCon, which I'm sure would be extremely diligent and, and learning, getting up to speed, if there was some finance committee that wasn't paying attention to all of that, and all those meetings and all those hearings and said, well, we don't like it, we're gonna recommend, guess that some number of voters are gonna say, well, I'm going with the finance committee, and I think it's, at some point, like, we have a different sections of government with different responsibilities, and I think um, you know, I, I I think it ought to be the um decision of the FinCon if they want to, but I think to change this and say they have to, I know, I'm saying it already says, it's a change in practice.
Not from, not from what we've been doing.
It's a change in practice.
From prior boards.
Correct.
Right, but we're not bound by prior board's actions.
I, I wish you wouldn't interrupt, I think it's very rude, and I just wish you wouldn't do it. So that's how I feel, and I'm sorry that I'm on the defensive for expressing how I feel, but that's the dynamic we have because of how this FinCon operates, puts people on the defensive for saying what they feel, and it's unfortunate.
Okay. So you would, how would you word it then? And, I mean, I think it's crazy to say all articles and especially of a financial nature, couldn't you just say regarding articles in the warrant of a financial nature or involving appropriation of money? Or do you really feel like you need to advise on violence?
We need to at least be a gatekeeper as to whether there are financial considerations or not. You, you don't know whether there's a financial, just because it comes from a planning board, you can't presume that there's no financial consequence.
I, I understand that, but um.
So I'll give an example of another, from another time of a, of a uh decision by a FinCon to comment on a particular article that had no financial bearing on the town, and that was the one for the stretch code for the green communities for, you know, for, you know, our, our, to meet the requirements for the town to be designated as a green community. And, and this is certainly not pointed at any individual that's on the current board, but the current um FinCon, but one particular member on that FinCon uh was, doesn't live in town anymore, his name I wouldn't mention anyway, but who happened to own a commercial horse barn. Felt that, had personal concern that the stretch code was gonna cause him to have to insulate his barn. And so he was adamant about addressing that particular warrant article for the town um to adopt the stretch code, um, and it was not, had no financial implication. I, I, I guess my concern is that if there is no financial implication to the town, that somebody who on the FinCon who might have a personal agenda would use their position on the FinCon to attempt to prevent something that, you know, pre- prevent uh uh, you know, prevent passage of something that had no bearing on their function. I, I didn't, I didn't state that very well, but to me, that's just, that particular instance is stuck in my mind for some time um, where it seemed inappropriate to me, the FinCon was even addressing that particular article. So.
They had the same behavior on the select boards, so.
So, the select boards are elected by the people to be the chief elected official, uh, they're empowered by the voters.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, any, any board can have a bad act. So I, I don't know that keeping us away from commenting on things that we were always required to comment on, on really helps the situation, I can tell you that the argument will be that you're the finance committee, you shouldn't be commenting on it, even if there is something that we should be commenting. This is just serving as a gatekeeper, where we, 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 basically, we've had occasions in the past where we've, we've said, yeah, it sounds fine, we don't do a deep dive into any of this stuff.
But there is a little bit of a conflict in the language, because I understand that it says all articles, but previous to that, it also specifically says, just in the next paragraph up, I think it's uh, uh, in.
To the.
A little bit.
Go down.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, so just, you know, that next paragraph up, it says municipal questions affecting revenue indebtedness or expenditures of the funds. You know, so if you're not talking about an article that relates to funds, um, I don't know.
No, I, I, I read that to remind us that if something's going on, we should be aware of it, and we may want to comment on, for instance, as an example, last year, there was a proposal to put uh free cash of two hundred fifty thousand onto the special town meeting in the fall.
Hmm.
And my regret about last year was, we didn't offer an opinion, the select board decided not to take it to the warrant, and I take that sentence as a sentence that would remind us that we could weigh in, which I, which I would have preferred to have done. That doesn't, that's not specific to warrant, I confess, to anything related to those three issues.
And that's kind of like a financial ombudsman, I'm not gonna finance committee. Uh, what, that, it, well, no, that, that read, that's a very expansive, you know, reading.
Yeah, well, that's how I read that line, yeah.
What about the rest of the FinCon?
I, I, I mean, the, the one example, I'm gonna go back to Rick's, you know, Rick's example, um, but the, the one that sticks in my mind is last year when we voted on the, the the will of the town to change the flag, Massachusetts state flag, and, and I, I kind of wobbled over that one, right, I mean, I'm like, well, why, why are we as a FinCon voting on that? I just, I, I, I mean, it's an important issue, but it's like, do we, are we kind of guiding anybody to, to, to vote a certain way on, on something like that? I, I just felt like it kind of isn't our purview, like.
That was essentially a personal, all of our personal opinion.
Right, right, right.
And my issue with it too, you know, I feel like the select board's job is to wager an opinion, or say, maybe it's in the best interest of the town, but.
You know, and then at town meeting floor, it was voted overwhelmingly, I mean, it was, it was, it was a huge, it seemed like it was like ninety five or maybe even a higher percentage of people had voted for it, but I, I, I felt kind of like, almost like uncomfortable voting for that, because I just didn't feel like it was our purview to vote on it, I, that's kind of, that was my personal opinion. And, and that's the example that I think of, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's analogous.
Yeah, yeah, and.
As far as the state goes, is, i- i- is there a guideline from the state, or is it, uh, is there a precedent as far as if the incomes?
There's certain things that go back to the statute, and then the rest goes to the bylaw.
Right.
So it's in the statute, you go to the state, and then you go to the bylaw as written.
So is the statute all articles typically?
No.
Or is it something?
Yeah. It, it has certain, there's certain limited, th- th- they describe it in a limited fashion, and then you write the bylaw.
Well, what, what I'm bringing up is not in any way trying to restrict anyone or limit anyone from weighing in, I think all of these issues are discussed in pub- public meetings and public hearings year round, and members of FinCon, just like any other resident and voter, can show up at those meetings and voice their opinion, and for a town meeting, they can voice their opinion, but that's different from as a committee taking a position, so you take, for instance, the MBTA communities, which I know is a, a fraught example, because it does have financial implications because of the financial penalties if you don't comply, but that's something the planning boards put in untold amount of time. And the idea that the uh, that the finance committee is going to basically get an elevator pitch and make a decision is kind of, I think at some point, like a disservice to all the work the planning board's doing, because at the end of the day, they're elected to, to do what they're doing, and they're gonna make a recommendation based on the hundreds of hours of work they've done, and, you know, if, if the FinCon is or is not supportive of that, that's gonna affect potentially a significant number of voters, but the finance committee, and no offense intended, but they're working with a lot less information than the planning board. That's just one example, but, you know, the, the proposal com- coming up with the animal bylaw to require leashing on town properties, I mean, anyone can make a quick gut level, do they think that's a good idea or not a good idea, but this board, over the course of years, has had how many discussions, and how many meetings, and how much correspondence, like this board, both current and former members, has a really rich history of that issue. That's like, not gonna be conveyed in, you know, like, so, I, I don't know, there's, there's a hundred issues, but, but, you know, I think when we're getting into bylaws and things like that, it's just, um, you know, the select board, because you're elected to be the chief elected official, you have an umbrella over everything. Uh, but short of that, most, really, I would say, most every other board commission committee has a, you know,
Narrow.
A narrower charge, and I think this, even though, you know, I understand that's, that is how it's written, all, especially involving money, but it just, it, it's a very broad scope for a committee that um just for the financial, has, has a lot to absorb, so.
Right, and we're supposed to sit there, not as part of the administration, which is the planning board, which is the the select board, and all the other boards that are part of the administration, we're supposed to sit there and represent the interest of of the people sitting at town meetings, and that's one reason why we do serve more of an ombudsman role.
I think it's supposed to serve the financial concerns.
Yeah, and then my fear is that, that it become, if it doesn't have a dollar attached to it, my fear is that all of a sudden, it's like, you won't hear from the finance committee if it doesn't have a dollar, and there are things that actually have no dollars that can be of great import to the town, that's my fear. So anyway, we're, we're, you know, you guys are gonna have to decide whether you wanna support this, not support this, you know, the FinCon wants to change.
Well, we're gonna change to five members.
Huh?
Well, we're with five members.
Yeah, I know, but, 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 you know, we have a currently existing bylaw, so, you, you know. This is carrying forward most of the currently existing bylaw, that's what I would say.
Yeah, first of all, it's, it's hard to approve or disapprove without seeing the changes.
Yeah, I didn't think we were taking this one up tonight, I was, I was hoping to to do that red line, as you said, I thought it was coming up later in the.
Well, I would hate to have this whole discussion again, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure.
When we discussed the planning board stuff last year, um, like the uh, the zoning with soldiers and sailors, did the planning board guy come in, what's his name?
Brian Murphy, yeah.
I think it was Ray Cook.
Oh, yeah, Ray.
Yeah.
But he didn't come in.
No, they didn't come in before the plan.
So that is, that seems a little bit problematic, you know, in the allocation process, but is it realistic to expect him to come when he really doesn't?
Well, it wasn't, it was a, a working group, um, he and I and the town planner and Angus were like a working group of that, so it wasn't really just a planning board.
I'm just wondering, like, you know, do we, if, if he's not coming for us like everybody else, do we have the full picture to make?
No, you may have, you may have, you may have to get it elsewhere.
Right.
Just like we have to go to the, the schools, get the, the school committee presentation. Might have to attend to the planning board, you know that we don't deep dive on everything.
Right.
And you know that, 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 you just give the example of soldiers and sailors, which is one of the times that we felt that we should speak up against something, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take a vote of five to nothing for a warrant, as we say, if we were testing to everything that is known by other people.
Well, that, that's problematic, though, because you're, you're presenting that you are making an informed vote.
An informed vote, but not as deep as someone else that could speak to it.
I, I think that would be lost on voters, I mean, I think if you, if the committee makes a vote, I think residents assume that you are fully educated on it.
Just by, I don't know where I lie, who I vote right up, I see at Mrs. Point, which is like the difference between voting on, you know, the Emerald Ash Board and voting on.
Well, we, that's an example of where we didn't actually have all the information we needed, that's.
For what?
The Emerald Ash Board.
No, I'm just saying that that's kind of a more like succinct, well defined.
Just trying to point out that every time you vote, there's information that isn't available to us, and we aren't as fully informed as the experts you could.
Those degrees of, of.
Yes, degrees.
Right, so to his point, you know, we might be missing the vote on months or years of information, so do we have the insight to actually stand behind a recommendation, I don't know, I just, I just think it's an interesting thing.
So why don't we just leave it everything the way it is?
Well, I did still uh offer you a bargain.
Well, okay.
I think that should be cleaned up, I mean, you can't have all articles, and especially those that are financial, I mean, that's dumb.
Well, I, I know that, but.
So, so why don't we say regarding all articles in the warrant involving the appropriation money? I mean, that's what I would favor.
What's that?
I would favor revising that to read regarding all articles in the warrant involving appropriation of money. That would my suggestion.
There you go.
All right, so all right, will you present our revised bylaw then, with the changes we've talked about, or should we just vote assuming those changes? all right, will you present a revised bylaw then with the changes we've talked about, or should we just vote assuming those changes?
Uh, I, I presented what, what I want to present. If someone else on the committee wants to redraft it, then go ahead. If you want to change it to five, I guess we've agreed to. If you want to, uh, limit it to only articles that have dollar amounts.
I, I do have another question on the last sentence about the timing of presentation of the budget. Uh, that's something that, um, you know, just the way it's written, providing time on this, on a timetable coordinates with the needs of the finance committee. I understand this, I think I understand the spirit of that, which is the coordination that, that takes place. But what if a future finance committee says, we want the FY twenty-six operating budget by September thirtieth? It's like, okay, I guess, which, which is not a crazy thing. When I was in Westford, the town manager would invite departmental budgets by like Labor Day. And we're like, we're like a month into the new operating budget and we're having to do like twenty-three months from now. Now granted, that was a recession time. That was an extraordinary time in the economy, but uh, the way it's written, it makes me a little uneasy. Um, just, you know, we always try to do the budget earlier than we did the year before and very rarely do we ever do that because the real world and staffing and all the other things we're doing, which I don't need to remind this board of, but.
I, I use coordinate because it's a mushy word on purpose. That it wasn't that the finance committee would dictate the schedule. It was just that we'd take into account. So, you know, you can, you can, that's, that's just there because up above, I believe, it said something about the annual meeting and two weeks or one week or something before it's. Well, this was just a way to rephrase what up above seemed to be something that we couldn't do.
It's not listed there, so it must be in the rest of the text. I don't, I don't see any mention of it in the, uh, in what you have given.
What's that?
I, I don't see that particular sentence in the, in the top.
Yeah, there's nothing about the budget in the top of it.
Yeah, so it must be in either some of the other pages or that you haven't.
Also, remind me, what does it say in the town manager act in term?
Well, so the town manager act says that the, that the budget that the town manager presents to the finance committee is as reviewed and modified by the select board. So it's got to come to the board before it goes to the FinCom.
And, and is there, is there a timeline? I can't remember if there's a timeline in the act or not.
Go up above though, Angus. Go up above. Okay, so.
The last sentence, is that what you're?
They shall meet at least ten days prior to, you know, meeting each year and at least five days prior to any special town meeting. That's what I was reacting to.
Yes, so.
That's what I was reacting to, is getting away from the language that we can't follow. Ten days, you can't do, you can't do five days.
Right.
So it's just, uh, uh, it was a way of stating that there's a requirement to submit it. But it can't be within the ten days or the five days. So I was trying to avoid that up above.
Okay.
So, um, I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity for like some middle ground on the issue that we're just debating?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think I heard Rob essentially say that he's worried about articles in the future that might not have a dollar value, but would have huge financial implications. So instead of just restricting it to appropriations, could we say all articles with reasonable financial impacts or reasonable fi- reasonably, you know, financial implications, that means some backdoor into something that does have a material impact down the road or potentially.
Yeah, and I'll say again, I, I'm, I'm not trying to restrict anything. It's more just, once it's in bylaw, that it shall be all articles. And then that's unambiguous. I think the spirit of the current bylaw, you know, a literal reading is that it is effectively the same thing. The spirit of it is all financial articles, you know, es- especially financial articles, which kind of implies that the FinCom can, I mean, the literal reading, I understand, is that the FinCom now and always, you know, was supposed to, uh, advise on every article, but, but I think the logical reading and I think the way prior chairs read it was that definitely financial articles, maybe the others. I think something like that. So, you know, it was written to say all financial articles and may, may offer recommendations on any other article at its discretion. Something like that is fine.
Yeah.
It's just writing in a way that you have to, you know, we're, we're just, we're in a situation right now where we're, you know, we have certain articles that are going before three committees concurrently.
Yeah.
And, you know, whether it's this, these two in capital or these two in community preservation, we have a very lean staff. We are spending enormous amount of time preparing for going to meetings. We still got a day job, like, we're working around the clock, like, to keep this place running. And, and so I'm just, it's the idea of every article and some of these things that may not seem like, I mean, like this dog bylaw, that's going to be a huge thing.
Yeah.
And this board's going to host, this guy pinned on it, and host public input and do news announcements to get the public involved and FinCom members can go. But that's different than the FinCom having to take a vote on that, because then it's like they either have to coordinate their outreach with you, or you have to do your own parallel outreach or your own parallel forum. So.
So why don't you come up with some proposed language?
I'm not looking to change the bylaw. I could, I get, you want me to do that instead of what else on my list that you want me to not do when I'm working on the FinCom bylaw?
But then leave the language the way it is.
I'm not. I'm not looking to change the language.
Let's just leave the language the way it is. I would, I would vote to five members, no secretary. Quorum set to, uh, majority of the, those answer. Okay. So I'll, I'll get you a new, new draft with that.
So you're going to keep it at all articles?
I'm going to keep, what's the ball this year, I changed.
I think we should be voting on the flag. I think we should be voting on dogs.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
It's just, it's just our opinions. I mean, there's no, you know, objective criteria for that evaluation. Do you like the flag? Well, I do, you don't, he doesn't. You know, I just, I, I'm not trying to flip our wings, but it.
No, but if we, if we, if we, it, you know, we can, we've taken in the past.
Yeah.
No action on it. And we could, yeah, we've, we've stated it in a book. We take no action on it.
Look at that.
That, that's a thing that, well, it's, it's in the FinCom book, but we can do that. We can state we take no action. We didn't take a vote. We offer no opinion. We can do that, but at least if we agree. At least if, at least we look at the article and have the discussion about whether it's of import or not. And I'm just trying to make sure that we don't get in a situation, which happened in the past, where people said, you can't comment on this because it's zero dollars. So, so, so that's, that's, that's all I'm saying. And we have, we have.
Zero dollars is restricted, right? Financial implications or something.
Yeah, right. But how about, how about as a matter of course?
So, Mark, example. I, 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 I can't recall.
Example of what?
Of what you just described. Where, where, where there was, where there was something with zero dollars.
Yeah, the, uh, the rezoning of, uh, surrounding the, uh, soldiers and sailors. We spoke against that. We recommended against.
Yeah, that's a perfect example because we spent six months, you know, between the select board and the planning board trying to come up with a solution and you guys spoke.
And there was, there was a solution that, that, but you could, you could have done it
Yeah.
in a way that, that we discussed.
But you weren't part of all those conversations. So even if you were right, we wasted six months, you know, so, I mean.
I mean, but, but, okay, so if you did wait six months, I'm sorry, but, you know, that, that solu- the solution you should have gone with was in front of you and it was dismissed and it should have been the one taking them. Should have written.
What I'm saying is the finance committee's not part of those working groups. I mean, you're, you're, you have a very limited season around, you know, the town meetings, so it's, it's not.
We spoke against that because of the potential.
Yeah.
The financial impact to the rest of the town, yeah.
Okay, so where are we at with this?
So I thought, as I said, we'll change it to five. We'll do, uh, a majority of, uh, of, uh, based upon city members and, and, uh, no secretary.
Would you, Rob, would you like me to kind of edit it?
No, I'll, I'll do it. We just.
I'm, I'm pretty good with words. I mean, just send it off.
We just, we just agreed to change what currently exists by those three items. I can do that. Thank you.
You may not get a motion from the, uh, the secretary.
We may not, so we may not.
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll, the quorum will remain at four and the bylaw will be six and we'll have a secretary loss.
And that would be rough for perpetual.
All right, are we moving on?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next one's a bylaw amendment. Uh, the intent of this is to, uh, give clear authority to the moderator to declare the two thirds. Um, this is something that moderator has done over the years, but doesn't actually have the authority to do. Has to, uh, call out a number. Uh, and that's why sometimes you'll hear her say that got the two thirds, ninety-nine to one, because there has to be a record in minutes of some numerical vote. Uh, at one point, at a fairly recent town meeting, it was quite obvious to everyone, but it was much more than two thirds, but she went ahead and did a, a hand vote because, I don't know why, but, but under the bylaw, th- this change would allow the moderator to make that two thirds determination. People could question it. There's a ten, there's a ten voter vote to stand up. So people questioned that moderator's judgment on that. They can, they can compel a, a hand vote. Uh, but this would basically give the moderator the authority to, to declare a two thirds had passed without doing a hand vote.
Or without having your, uh, uh, physical count.
Yeah, physical count, that's what I meant.
Yeah. Silly question, but is our, is our current moderator for this article?
She is.
Okay.
Yeah. No, we, we've had the conversation. There's, there's several things that we've had a conversation about that she feels the moderator could be empowered to do. And I thought, I thought this was kind of the simplest of, of them all. Uh, mainly because in, at least in the last four that I have been participant in, uh, it's been very clear. Like, there really hasn't been a close two thirds vote. It's been a couple hands versus the rest of the room.
Everybody had a groan zone.
So the, the idea being she always has the ability to say, I'm going to do, I'm going to do a count. But if it's pretty clear, there's only one person in opposition, that's a two thirds vote, she can declare as a two thirds vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, that's interesting. So ten, ten attendees at the meeting, ten participants in the meeting would have to challenge it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I wonder. So I think the idea is. Where who knows that? If fifty, if fifty-fifty, if it's a fifty-fifty vote, she says, oh, two thirds passed, you then would have enough people to say, that's not, that wasn't two thirds. That would be the idea. But also, you can always challenge the, the decision of the moderator. That's, that's a thing that you can do. Yeah. Where it was, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I have seen people demand a hand count before, and I don't think it was done by ten. Maybe it was done by ten people. But I also recall, and I, I wish I could recall what what the articles were for, but I I'm sure in the time I've been here, there's been more than one article where the two thirds was it was a bare two thirds or barely not two thirds. Um, and so, I mean, it does happen.
All right, so can you downside to this?
I'm going to do this again. Is this coming from?
Well, Jim wrote it, but that we would look to the board to sponsor it in terms of how it appears on the warrant.
Yeah.
Uh, if the board adorses it, it would, it would show up as one that they were.
And the moderator is requesting this?
No, this is just.
We, we've had multiple conversations in the past that she felt a change would be helpful. And this was one of those.
Probably to speed up the meeting, I'm assuming is part of it.
No, it's not really, it's just.
Wouldn't it be appropriate, um, with something like this at, at the outset of the meeting? I mean, um, the current moderator always states a certain uh, presents a certain set of rules about how the meeting should, should run. Um, and would it be appropriate for the explanation of maybe, you know, be fifty words or less, um, how the close two thirds that the moderator called based on their head count, um, you know, their, their, their view of the room, um, how that would be challenged if somebody were to challenge me. That seems tight.
Unfortunately, that's, I can't mandate that.
Right.
That would be up to the moderator and future moderator.
Yeah, I guess that's the moderator's choice to what to say at the beginning of the meeting in terms of the rules.
It's also something in a perjury of FinCom that wanted to, something in a packet about something.
And one, one thing that I think puts the town clerk in a little bit of a tricky situation is since the minutes do need to reflect a physical vote.
Yeah.
So for those two thirds vote where there's not a hand count and she, the moderator has to call out, it's ninety-nine to one, or it was ninety to ten, or the, the clerk has to record that knowing there wasn't actually a count, like, it's a little disingenuous.
Yeah, right.
So this is in a way just kind of calling it what it is. Like, she's calling it right now. She's saying the numbers because the clerk's got to have something to put in the minutes, otherwise the attorney general will kick it back. If it's a two thirds vote, instead of he says, the moderator declared a two thirds. If, if, you know, we had this language, that would be fine, but since we don't, the attorney general's office or the view of the bylaw looks to see what the quantum of the vote was.
Which happened.
It did happen.
And I, I sent it in. I didn't include the number. It was when Mike was moderating and I didn't include the number and they kicked it back to us and he looked back two months.
Yeah, but he, he looked back and fortunately in Mike's handwritten notes, Mike had written down the number. So he was able to do us a revised report and not have to revoke the whole town meeting, but, but it did, the attorney general did actually kick it back for that reason.
All right, this seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I make them look that we accept the changes to the, uh, town meeting elections law.
That's so good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I make them watch it to accept the, uh, the edits to the town.
So shouldn't this be an election?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's arguable if this is a classic.
There we go. And zero dollars.
So what we'll do is we'll try and work on language that lets people know that no action refers not to whether something good or bad or whatever, but it's just that, you know, it was, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure out how, how to word it. You can't just say, no action, then people are going to ask, what does that mean? We'll have to come up with a boilerplate way to address situations like this.
Or to the beginning of the packet.
Well, you can explain it there, but also, it, it, people are still going to look to see and, and, uh, so does that sound like a good, good way to proceed with something like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you could say something like, you know.
Yeah, well, the, right.
All right.
We'll try.
No financial implication and we'll.
No, that's that's not the one I'm saying.
All right, next one.
So the opioid, um, which was, uh, basically a change in state law that, that made it, you know, made the action that we had requested town meeting do to create this made it no longer necessary because of the law signed in, uh, in, in December. Uh, Jenny's got details much more, but we're going to not show. That's it.
Okay, yeah, I move.
Do you actually, do you want to understand more of, of the opioid settlement and so the.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to do?
So.
Explain.
Yeah, what, what was the press, did you have a question or not?
Just, it just, I, yeah, so that the attorney general entered into settlement agreements with the spirit and, uh.
We set up an opioid last year.
Right, and we got this.
And dedicated, um, with a dedication of those funds directly to it. So really what this is, because you can dissolve it without town meeting, but you have to, you, you need to do a vote to, um, repeal that.
And the reason to dissolve it is?
This newly enacted legislation that allows us, allows, allows me to reserve the funds for appropriation for its purpose.
You don't need a dedication.
I don't have to do a stabilization fund.
So this doesn't increase our exposure to anything. This is in keeping with what the state actually has blessed.
Yes.
So, so previously, Jenny, did, did we have to spend the money in some kind of like an anti-drug program or rehab, rehabilitation program?
Yes, there is, there is an agreement that, um, we signed on to, or the select board signed on to in accepting these funds to spend it on that.
But that doesn't change. Your obligation is still competitive. It's just you have a much easier mechanism for dealing with it. This is just changing the mechanism. That's all it is.
Clear.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we, uh, uh, um, bring forward on the article, we'll recommend, recommend the article for the revocation, dedication of revenues to the opioid settlement, stabilization fund. Recommend recommend the article for the revocation, dedication of revenues to the opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Second.
So I do think, though, there has to be another article that will appropriate because this previous, the previous funds have been close to free cash. They're still part of free cash. So that has to be appropriated into this now special reserve account. Does that have to wait a cycle?
Well, you could reopen the warrant again.
Yeah, it looks like they're gonna be reopening the warrant anyway, that that next meeting regarding the police cruiser.
But do we have to wait until town meeting votes to revoke the dedication of funds before, or can we just, like, pass over it if they don't?
Yeah. All right, are you are you voting on this?
I have no idea.
Cause I see a number there. One thousand.
Yeah, this is an interesting one. So, yeah, why don't we just vote and be done with it? It'll be easier to vote. Be easier to vote, I think.
Not really, it's just moving. Something changing.
That's the type of discussion I'm trying to avoid.
Decreasing entropy, it's a good thing.
So we have to motion first.
Yeah.
So I move to adopt the article to revoke the acceptance of the fourth paragraph. Of the national law.
You're making the appropriate motion, however Jim writes it out. So any second? Yeah, what do you say? Jim, what do you say? Any second? Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Who's gonna write the? Russian eye. Yeah, I'll 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 write this one.
All right, and the last is the reduction of property tax.
Actually, I know there's cattle, because we have this established capital stabilization fund as number sixty.
Oh, sorry.
Hopefully, the write-up was clear. Okay. Any questions, any discussion?
Okay. But I I I guess it's clear to me, the only thing I I would like to see added either to the article itself or certainly to the narrative is something about what capital actually is, like like.
That'd be good, yeah.
Yeah, like in other words, like, you know, five years.
Five years for twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Local services, by the way, uses five years, twenty thousand.
Something like that, so that it's sort of crystal clear what that is. That's, but to me, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, so this would be, if if this is set up, a future town meeting would be asked to put the significant share of the current stabilization right now into the capital stabilization, and that would be a
That'll be important.
accounting exercise for another day.
Yeah. In the meantime, you'll extend from the regular.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So just a continuum of the practice, go through a cycle and then and then, as Angus said, move most of it over.
So with that, will that be a two thirds? When that, when we get to that, will that?
I know it's for. I believe it would be, yeah, because it's it's out of general purpose.
Right, out of general.
So that would end up being a two thirds.
But then it becomes.
Yeah, once it's in a, if if it was in a capital civilization, it would be a supposed majority at that point.
All right. All right, so I would I would recommend that, or I move that we recommend to establish capital's stabilization fund pursuant to MGL, chapter forty six and fifty eight. With the addition to the article, to the article request form shown here, that we define what capital's stabilization.
I know you're talking about narrative.
That's narrative.
Okay, so I'm looking to rewrite these forms and then.
Five years, done. All right, we'll cut it there.
All right, second. All in favor?
Bye.
So over to our end. I suggest we vote on this because this is, I think, a great change. And, you know, the whole capital planning process is important for our consideration. This is kind of easy with that. Angus, I presume we're gonna work towards taking the capital improvement spreadsheet and and directly tying it down to this one account now, in a sense, so you'll be able to see what the stabilization balance should be compared to the worksheet in some fashion, where the policy is. So is there a motion on this?
Yeah, I I I'll make a motion to establish a capital stabilization fund for someone who matches general law or you section fifty.
Second, second by Dan. Any more discussion?
I do, but I just wanna make sure with Angus, I know you, I know you're sponsoring it, but you're, this is not gonna tie your pants in any.
No, no, I mean, like, I think it's, I think it's a good change. I think it's more straightforward with the voters because when people put all this money in the state, in the stabilization, they've done it with the intent to fund the capitalist obligation. So I think putting it into the capital, I, and you know, I think the accounting is is gonna be a different exercise. It's gonna take some real time because we're gonna have to really look at both what needs, what the needs are for capital, but also what if, you know, what amount of contingency.
Right.
The town still might wanna keep in stabilization, which is a much more, stabilization can be used for any law or purpose. So that is gonna be a bigger discussion for.
Right, sure. But by separating it out, we could more easily have a conversation.
Yeah.
That's the biggest thing.
Right, right.
Because right now, it's like, people don't know what is in there that should be capital and what is in there that could be not capital. So did we take a vote?
No, we haven't yet, so.
We had a second, right?
Yeah.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Jim, would you write it?
Sure, sure. I can define what capital's.
Right, right.
All right, sixty one.
Yeah, I recommend the, or I move that we recommend the reduction of property tax obligation to veterans in exchange for volunteer services.
Second. All in favor?
Bye.
Make a motion to reduce the property tax obligations of veterans in exchange for volunteer services?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Who wants to write that? You wanna write that one?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Jim, you're you're updating the this whole schedule, so we end up.
I think Mrs. Manley, they're not updating, but I'm keeping track.
Oh, I thought you were, oh, because you handed it out, I thought you'd go, okay. So can can you circulate that ahead of next meeting?
Yep.
Definitely.
Thanks. And guys, I was wondering well, I'll send out an email, but I'm thinking we maybe wanna have a meeting next week. On Wednesday. I'm not here, you know what I mean? Okay, so we're not gonna have a meeting next week. Okay.
Angus, at what point in time do you write the article language? Uh.
That's what I do.
Oh, you did. Well, yeah, I mean, for the recurring ones, yeah, Jim puts together a first draft and, you know, I think like, it's really a matter of time available, so I don't know when you have.
Just later on in the process.
Well, it's it's a little package together. Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I mean, we we can, we could get, like, dummy language as as placeholder, but it's it's a, you know, it's a multi-step process, because we draft it. Jim drops it, I review it.
To the town council.
Yeah, actually, I mean, we often get the board's input before we get legal review, but it goes through a few rounds. You know, the intent of what we're proposing is generally pretty clear, so it's just getting the language right, which is but, yeah, we we haven't started yet, so I guess.
Are you talking about for the book?
Yeah.
After March.
Okay, cool.
After what?
After March.
That sounds good.
Okay. That's a, it's a thing going on, I think. Okay.
All right, is your business concluded? We still have half an agenda to get.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, yes, no, I think we're good.
Don't get run, don't get run.
Does that sound good? We're good? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn. All in favor? Vote. Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
So we were on.
Seventy.
Yeah, I mean, that's the one, you know, we didn't get a lot of comments noticed, but because we definitely wanna put in for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, we're still scrolling.
Is page seventy seven?
Yeah.
All right. No.
One seventy nine.
Fifty six.
Yeah, it's.
Yes, it's on the. It's the.
Very, very. Yes.
But, yeah, no, I I I understood that. Thanks, Jim. Yeah, no, thank you.
So is this something when I do this, do tomorrow or Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, bye.
I mean, how likely?
Well, she she's got something, I mean, and we have lots of raw material, we have a lot of narratives, letters that actually, the postal did with the forum, has really some places, the House of Word narrative. You know, I think we have to do it. But but one we, one thing we did this morning is we we sent out a letter to, or an email to everybody who had submitted support letters for either the either the two main grants.
Yeah.
And we wrote it to say, you know, we were intending to pursue this new opportunity. We intend to use your prior letter, if you prefer to send a new letter. Great, but we didn't wanna like, you know, because we don't have to have people write multiple letters. So I think, yeah, our intent is to use most of the letters we already have and then um, yeah, the timing's not great, but.
And would the grant funds be considered part of our match?
Well, that's actually something my my thought was gonna be to actually not present that. And and we're just saying that that's been appropriated, but it's it's scheduled to sunset, so there's no assurance that that's gonna be there after this fiscal year. So I was actually gonna write it up that the deficit's like two point one million. That way, if the feds come in, right, because if we ask for one point six and they give us one point, or one point five, and give us one point five, then we're back at like
Yeah.
what are we putting in versus the city? Whereas if they happen to swoop in with a full amount, which isn't our line based on some of the other projects. You know, and I think that's a fair, you know, I I'm gonna, I'll be you know, I'll I'll say, yeah, I'll be honest, I know, but we have this appropriation, but it is scheduled to sunset. We are gonna be seeking voter approval to extend that, but you know, in terms of what we have assured, you know, this is also the two fifty from the city that that expires in a year or two, so.
Right.
But just like a lot of things, I don't know exactly what I'll write, so I'll write it. But, yeah, we're looking for a couple of ready projects, and I think we we have to find a way to get this done by Wednesday at five o'clock, so that's that's what we're.
All right, so you don't need a vote from us?
Well, I look at it as a grant, so I would I would I would say it would be helpful to have.
So I I I move that we authorize submission of applications for a grant for the old spurring, that was both community project funding to Congressman Moles' office.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Well, next item is the mass C E C. Public buildings, it looks like she answered all your questions, right? My question, so she's saying three thousand per building, or will these three buildings?
No, the three buildings would be counted as one.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, that would be the next question, is that how would how would we fund that?
Right.
And well, in in fact, we still have in the select board account, we probably still have funds. Would that be an appropriate use or not? We probably still have those funds in this year's uh, and and, you know, the current fiscal years, but
we didn't, we don't, I, it was, I
I thought we were down to the.
We we were down, but but I think, I mean, I think that's an amount of funds that we we can find in the budget. It might come partly from select board, partly from public works. I, yeah, I do think with the select board, we were posing in to where yeah, we're we're only let's see, professional technical services, yeah, I think we're only projecting about twenty four hundred dollars
Yeah, okay.
remaining, but but, yeah, I mean, we we can, we can find.
And that, do you think it'll be this official year? We got it, or probably be after June thirty?
And that's a good question. I didn't didn't ask that, but my gut is that they actually, well, I I don't know when the, when we would owe the funds. But.
I just thought that the time this whole thing gets rolling and
Yeah.
select somebody. I did have a question. I don't remember which other materials it was on. It looked like there was an opportunity for help with decarbonization plans. It was further in the pack.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I saw that, and that was, that was through the Green Communities Program.
What which one was that? That's correspondence, right?
Yeah, it was from Dylan Patel, who's
It was right at the end, because it wasn't on, they can't, we posted, so.
Which is kind of weird, too, because I'm surprised I didn't get that email. I mean, I'll be seeing him on Wednesday anyway, but
I mean, that's that's unknown what that actually means. I looked on their website and I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, okay.
And I quite honestly, I'm Mike, I I two things, either it's not as detailed, or it's actually referring to the same program. That's my guess.
All right.
One or the other.
Okay. All right, do you make a motion on this?
Sure, I move that we that we apply for, that the town applied for the mass C E C nonprofit and community decarbonization plan.
Second.
Assistance.
And will you be doing the application or?
Yeah, well, I'll I'll, yeah, I actually have a call scheduled with her tomorrow. Uh, you know, yes, I I'll make sure this happens and, yeah. You know, and I don't think we have a hard timeline, particularly if we're, if we decided, we, if we assume that it's not gonna be done this fiscal year, then I don't think we have a hard timeline. I just have so much other stuff to read and deal with right now that but I have a call scheduled, it's at noon tomorrow.
All right. All in favor?
Bye. Great, thanks.
Okay, I am at draft framework for potential budgeted step increases. So I guess with this, I mean, the situation we're in, whereas the the new personnel evaluation program is out of sync with the budgeting, right? I mean, my my main priority is whatever we do this year, I I want it to be the same as what we're gonna do in subsequent years. I don't wanna do something different this year and just create uncertainty in the whole thing. Kind of played around with a couple of different ways to do this. I mean, you know, it's all performance evaluation based. I mean, typically, H R kind of theory is that employees will be like in a bell curve where the majority of employees will be meeting expectations, and then you have some that don't and some that exceed. I mean, we could try to look at it like that in terms of estimating the number of steps. I I'm kind of inclined to just say we should have a part in the labor budget be set aside for performance evaluation increases. You know, to to pick a number of steps, I feel like that's restrictive on Angus and what what he feels like, but if it's just a dollar amount and that that will increase as the labor budget increases. That seems to be a cleaner way of doing it, and we could target that to try to to get at the number of steps that.
Yeah, that's it, I mean, we, we, yeah, we need to somehow decide what that number ought to be, and, and.
Yeah.
One of the ways to get to that might be to make some assumptions about the number of steps.
Yeah.
But of course, there's then flexibility, you know, if we're making assumption, the number of steps and the, and the size of the steps, the average size of the step, then, then we come up with a number, but that doesn't commit to that number commits to, you know, thoughtful application of the, of the, of the, uh, the funds that are allocated.
Yeah.
Well, one of the variables, I've talked to each of you individually on this, but Rick had reached out earlier today, and, you know, I pointed out that the kind of average staff costs are based on forty hour work, we obviously have some that were employees that are less than forty, so it's not, it's just not as linear as, um.
But if we, I mean, I, I think in order to know the percentage, we would need to know, I think we should have the labor cost exclusive of union.
I agree with you, I agree with you, yeah, the numbers I sent you earlier today, I've, I've used that same kind of bottom line metric every year, just to have a sense of like total labor, but I agree that, that the right number to use, if you're, if you're looking towards some, you know, percentage of a number, should be only inclusive of those positions that are.
Increases, yeah.
Correct, so should exclude, you know, the four employee contracts, the three union contracts, as well as, uh,
Or.
Things like the, you know, that, I mean, the number, the gross number I include includes like the election workers, and which is just kind of like not even in the same conversation.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're all, you know, which.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that, that would be, you know, that, I, that would be a number I could put together, it wouldn't take more than twenty or thirty minutes to get down on.
So, I mean, I, I think based on what you prepared with the average cost of a step increase, if we try to get at around twenty thousand for increases, I don't know what percent that will be of your budget, but, um, of any of the labor budget. And I just did that based on forty employees, assuming you have one or two that are outstanding. And then maybe eight or so that are above expectations. And that would give you about ten step increases. I couldn't find anything online like the standard, there's, there's a lot in the, um, for profit, you know, H R about, you know, carrying three percent or four percent, but that's not where we're at, so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, did you have a number in mind that you think would be appropriate?
Uh. No, not a specific number, I mean, uh, you know, I'll say every single number will, will help.
Yeah.
Uh, because there's, I think there's gonna be, you know, we have a lot of very high performing employees, uh, and because of the decentralized management structure, uh, you know, I might have a number in my head, but I, I need to keep in mind, there's a number of other supervisors, not even employees, then they're gonna have their own direct reports that they, they are gonna see as standouts, so how that gets, uh, kind of allocated is gonna be a, yeah, uh, a careful process.
Yeah, that is one concern I have, because it, it should be objective, so that all employees are treated fairly, but if you have five different supervisors.
Twelve.
I'm just saying.
Twelve.
More than one.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, so that's gonna be a management challenge for you, right?
Yes, yes.
Cause you are the final arbiter of who gets any increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the evaluations will be done based on, they were, they were all done based on the uniform platform.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we did, the library did tweak it a little bit.
Yeah.
This, and they wanted to, and, um, but for the most part, they're all consistent, there's, there was, there's a different form about, about, there's basically three different forms based on different uh, grade, uh, grades of positions, because some questions were more or less relevant to different, uh, you know, whether it's a C or a, or, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's the same platform, and they're all, you know, substantially similar, the same, you know, same, uh, kind of, uh, the same metrics, uh. Yeah.
So, um, you mentioned ten steps. Um. Is that, how do you, how do you work that, I, I?
I just, I, as I mentioned, looking at the bell curve of performance of employees, if you have forty employees in the organization, I think probably seventy percent are performing, are meeting expect, if you, if you do the performance evaluation literally, naturally, if you're meeting expectations, you're doing your job, that's good, you know, and I think most employees are there. I think the tendency is to rate somebody above average or outstanding, you know, without any real support for that, so if you buy into that concept, you'd have like sixty to seventy percent in the middle, and then maybe ten percent above expectation, maybe, you know, two percent that are actually outstanding, going far, but, you know. So that's how I approached it, and I came up with ten step increases, but, I mean, that's just, you know. But you had said, I think you were looking at maybe in that range.
Uh, yeah, I mean, twelve would be better than ten.
Yeah, you, I mean, you, but, which, which you tabulated, it was eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, um, and I'm assuming you chose that set for.
I mean, I, the high end was higher than I, yeah, I thought, I just wanted to kind of give a range and, and, uh, I think, you know, we, we all know, you know, enough about enough employees, so, so like that idea of two percent being kind of truly outstanding, when you're dealing with a universe of forty one, I think we can all think of at least two employees who are extraordinary.
Not two.
So, so right there, you're at five percent.
Yeah.
Because we have a small sample size, and, and we, you know, we've done really good hiring, and we've got really, really good people, so obviously, you know, every, like you said, every, you know, every increment is gonna, is gonna, you know, be, be, put to good use, uh, uh, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't think it would be anywhere at a high end, but, um, you know, twenty, cause that's half the, half the universe of people.
Right.
So, and even, I mean, I was very cognizant that ten is twenty five percent of the people, which is really like more than what you might normally see, um.
I think you had asked about whether more than one step was appropriate, and I think it definitely is, so that's why I'm thinking, you know, ten would still, maybe a couple of people would get two steps, but.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, if you think twelve is more appropriate, that's fine, but, but again, this is an average, it's not really gonna.
That's right, yeah.
So I, I just was using that as a means to try to estimate what percent of the labor budget we should uh, we should go for, and I, I mean, I was thinking it would be about probably point five percent, but I, I don't really know the the impact of the union and the contract.
Right.
Number you're gaming.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I could, I could back out that, those, uh, you know, like you said, it would take like, it's not like a big deal, it's just, it's, it wasn't like a two minute thing, but.
Yeah. So what do you think about doing a percentage of the labor budget as, as an approach to this, as a durable going forward? Instead of a, a certain number of steps, which would change every year, I think. And maybe.
It would change every year because headcount would go up, or because?
Just because it's based on, I mean, ideally, what would happen is the performance evaluations would be done, Angus would come to us and say, I need ten step increases, this is how much it's gonna cost, it's for these people in these grades, but that's not happening this year, and it's probably not gonna happen any year, I don't know, I mean, it's just the way it does go. Um. So we have to base it on something.
I mean, I could come back at a, you know, at the next meeting with, with the correct denominator in terms of the percentage, and what, what the dollar amounts, cause most of this, ninety five percent of this memo would, would be unchanged, but I think those percentages of that, if that's the idea, is to have it be a basis of the, um, you know, overall.
Budget.
That, that's something that would be, you know, that would give you like a, a true percentage, uh, and, and an objective basis for whatever uh, number that you end up supporting. That would also, you know, allow Chris to be part of the discussion, which I think is important, cause it's, you know, if, if there's something that's gonna be year after year, we wanna have, we wanna make sure that we all buy in from the full board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, um, going with a a percentage and saying that that's what it, what it's going to be, you know, targeting the same percentage each year going forward, you know, this is a year where things are, you know, particularly tight, um, and another year there might be less, so, you know, so if you said half percent this year, perhaps in another year, you know, point seven five percent would, would.
Yeah, I, I did mean that it had to be the same, but I mean, that approach would be the same, it would always be a percentage of the budget.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of like, oh, right, you assume it's.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, I, 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 yeah, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable way to do it, and if that's, yeah, if that's the strategy going forward and consistent going forward, then that's a good thing.
And then if, if there were excess in there, then that would just stay in that that line, right? On budget personnel costs, and you could.
Yeah, cause the math's not gonna come down to the, to the dollar.
Right, so then you could use that.
Well, so, so, I mean, what I, what I envision, I think it's in here, is that, that, so once, let's say, let's say ten, or let's say some dollar, that would then be, um, built into the applicable department budget, it wouldn't be carried in like a separate line.
Oh, I thought it was on budget personnel.
No, 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 the idea would be, an amount would be set, then it would be kind of backfilled.
Okay.
For those affected budgets, cause that, that is gonna be important from a payroll standpoint, they can't have wages in the, in the same line with where they're actually getting paid.
I think, yeah, you laid this out, how, yeah. Okay. Alright, and then, so what would happen to the excess?
Uh. There probably wouldn't be a whole lot, it might be, you know, under a thousand dollars, I mean, who knows, it depends on how that, how the math works.
Right.
But I, I don't think it would be a, you know, a significant amount of.
So would you just spend all of it, or would you still only spend what was warranted by performance evaluations?
Only what's warranted, but, you know, I think we, we do have a lot of, you know, a lot of high performing people.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, you know, what I see, and, and there's departments like library where I don't have that day to day visibility, so.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, alright, so you wanna do that at the next meeting, then?
Yeah, yeah, I think that timing still works.
Alright.
So, so the, just, kind of interesting industry, so if it was, if it is, say, half percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which lines up here with, you know, approximately ten steps total, um, then that might, I guess. Eight.
I think it's actually gonna be more than like twelve, because if it's point five percent of a small number, wait, no, that's gonna be the opposite, so we need to do more, yeah, I think we need to. I tried to calculate it from the, the budget, and it just sounds like too many variables.
Yeah, oh, you, you talking about the sort of weighting of.
Yeah, so that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's based on an aggregate of labor, which includes all those other things.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Alright. And our next item is the special event permit.
Is this second or thirty, or this?
Second.
The second. So. Resident, non-resident, this is actually a non-resident, even though Deb is submitting it, it's active as, so that, that's, I think. And the approvals.
So what you're suggesting is that they check appropriate block is inappropriate.
So this is the one that the approvals went to Park and Rec and Milwan, even though I don't think either one is supposed to be approving this.
I, I purely for the heads up, it was mainly cause it was, it was included, it was the first thing she, she sent in two.
She sent in four things, I think, and the whole packet went to both committees, it's just so confusing.
Horses was the other one.
Yeah.
So I think that I meant to just send them the horses section of it, uh, but that's, that's a real private. But they, they also gave their thumbs up for it, so.
Yeah, I just feel like it would be good if we could figure out who has to approve what, because I was at the Milwan meeting when they discussed this, and one of the older members said, no, we only approve the facility use, which is the Milwan building.
Yeah.
I think it's good to give a heads up, but.
Sure.
Um. I don't see any issues in this.
Okay, I think, so I, I move that we, um, approve the application for, um, like, uh, can across, can across.
Second. On paper, alright.
Um. It looks like they, it next meeting will have something on a solar activity that they wanna do on.
Oh, the, uh, yeah, the eclipse.
Oh, from the library, yeah.
So that's just that.
And I saw something in my email today about the, um.
Ucon.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I follow up, I said that's.
Did he actually put the application in, or is he just thinking it's gonna roll?
Yeah, yeah, no, he put, he put the application, and it's just, I, I, as Chris suggested, maybe we can get closer to the actual date as opposed to just like so far in the future, so I pushed him off a little bit, I said, don't worry.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe you can't force the.
The half, the half, oh, the five, whatever it is, down, uh, South Street, yeah, that comes in from Newbury and.
Alright, moving on to minutes, um, I have a couple of questions on this, one, I think if you or Max can do a global search upon lead instead of lead, this says lead a couple times, it should be led. I, I highlighted a few of them, so maybe just.
Sorry, what, what's the?
It should be lead, but it's lead.
For what?
Just in, in a sentence, like, for example, on, on page two of the minutes, under item B.
You're not talking about, uh, P V.
No, I'm talking about L E A D, lights. Um, it says, which has lead to better cooperation with your projects.
I think L E A D is correct.
Which has lead?
Yeah, I think it is, it's not the common usage, I think L E D is, but I actually think, I think it's correct.
Past tense, you know, he, he led.
To led, yeah, I, I, I could be wrong.
He, 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 she, or they led.
I think L E D is a better word to use, but I, I actually think if you check it.
Oh, that's interesting.
I think it's correct.
He has lead, which has lead?
I think so, I could be wrong.
Alright, well.
A long time.
Johnson.
But, yeah, no, it, it reads a lot better now.
It says, which has lead to better cooperation.
It's also.
I actually read it, when I read that, I just read it.
I, I'm also, I've also noticed Microsoft is editing my words a lot more too, so if I type in like something incorrectly, it corrected on Mac, and I don't even know, so.
Still wouldn't mean led, got it. Alright, on the first page, under item B, this is on the learning tree lease. It says Reed and Jennings felt that further review of the lease agreement would be warranted. I don't think you did that, did we?
Well, I, I mean, I was a little tongue in cheek about it, but I said, you know, if we need to have a hearing on it, we will, which I don't think we need to have a hearing on it, but I did basically say if if it needs more review, we'll bring it back to the board and.
Yeah, so the next sentence says that, if you, I would just strike that Reed and Jennings felt that further review, is it inclines that the decision was incorrect in the first place? The next sentence says you will review the Brian thing.
Lead is correct. But it's not preferred.
Lead as an L.
L E A D is a correct usage of the past tense of.
Okay.
Is it really?
It really is, yeah.
It spelled the same way?
It's a synonym for lead, for L E D, they're synonyms. Yeah.
So it's a.
But on the other.
Of L E A D.
And, 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 and the other.
The same word is the past tense and the.
Yes, yeah, that's why, that's probably why I remember.
English is a mess.
But, but it's not, but on the, on the other hand, you would never say he was, or he, she, or it, or they were misled. M I S L E A D, it would be M I S L E D.
Alright, alright, under item E, A. Um, Rob, this is a question for you, the last sentence says Phillips said that the fear might be that West Newbury would then be able to renege on its commitment to the district. This is in response to the elementary school. I don't remember you saying that, and I.
No.
I circled a lot.
It, I, I don't think it affects.
As you said.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
Actually, I do vaguely remember that, fact language is not a big deal, you know.
You remember it said that way, or?
Yeah, something along.
Something, right, I agree, something along the lines, the, the fear is, th- th- they have a fear about that, and somehow they believe that we're gonna use that against them, or what.
I, I just don't even wanna give that any.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you know my attitude, Chris Minutes.
Alright, under item C, there's a T missing on Rob, unless this is indeed the past tense of.
We're.
All right, under item C, there's a T missing on Rob, unless this is indeed the past tense of bro.
Where is it?
The last full sentence of item C, any questions would be bro, to this town's attention.
Oh, Rob, it was, no, I, yeah, I picked the other, the children, yeah.
Um, and then on item D, last sentence, just strike that.
Item D, last sentence.
Yeah. There weren't any others missing, so.
I'm, I'm good with it, I, I don't put that level of, I read it, read over it, but it makes sense to me, I move on.
I'm just looking at our future readers of our minutes, I want them to be impressed.
Right, I, I want them to.
That's right, you're important. All right, item H, A correspondence.
Most of them approve.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
All right, um, okay, this is just the lettering of the Groveland Board. We got the response from Nisha. We have the letter from the assessing department.
Do we, do we feel, feel compelled in any way to respond to the, uh, letter from the Groveland Board?
I, I, I would leave that to the committee. I mean, this came in before they even had the meeting.
Oh, boy, it's funny, okay, it is to the school, I, you know, I, I, for some reason, I thought it was addressed because it was from their select board, and I didn't even much see that it was, uh, I assumed it was the, sorry.
Good. Um, so, I mean, we don't need to discuss the correspondence, but unless you have anything.
Just briefly on that, that hash street, we will, uh, you know, have that on March eleventh for the board to review an updated plan. Because even though I think their note could be easily resolved with a quick email back, uh, I talked to Lenny about it last week, we both agreed we wanna have a final plan that we, that we and our staff are relying on for five years.
Yeah.
This was all in my place.
Okay.
The letter we think for evaluation changes.
Yeah, you know, um, I think that was a good write-up by Christian, and, you know, I think that should be somehow public with you all.
Yeah, well, that's part of, I had asked him to, yeah, to gather partly so it would be at least somewhere on the website, but, you know, I have, I have, uh, suggested that they, you know, the board assessors, you know, host, uh, some presentation or some discussion of it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that, I've talked to Rich Baker about that, but, um, you know, they had it on a number of their meetings, people don't go, but, yeah.
It's because they meet at eight o'clock in the morning, but, I'm just saying.
But, you know, there is, there is also some, you know, they, they don't wanna see the evaluation process get politicized, and so I, I think there is some sense that they don't wanna, you know, like, I don't, they don't wanna play, play into that.
I'd rather see it politicized in a public meeting than a town meeting. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't know how real the.
That's good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think they had a, I, I think that would be wiser than to at least make it, give people an opportunity.
Give people an opportunity, yeah. All right, do you have safety theme on?
Someone was in a, uh, letter writing movement at DocDAM safety, these actually came in as separate letters by mail.
Oh, those DAMs.
On the same day, so it was, our head was spinning, it was like eight letters from a, yes, of DAMs safety.
Right, right, and they're all so relevant to us. There was one that was marginally relevant, I think.
Um, and then the letter to the editor, that's gonna be in the paper this week, and it was posted on Facebook.
Yeah, okay.
There's not much response to it, I think it kind of just skated Bart, I thought, peoples.
Okay.
Which is good.
Yeah, I, I, I actually wasn't fretting too much over that article quite honestly.
I was just annoyed because I, well.
Well, I, what I thought was kind of odd is that it was all about somebody from Georgetown or West Newbury. What's wrong with that?
A farming interest in West Newbury.
Yeah, but it's, it was, it's just odd that that was what they happened to pick when they write about West Newbury. Talk about somebody from Quill, from Georgetown that wants to farm at West Newbury.
Well, that person contacted the paper asking for an article.
Oh, did they?
And contacted Senator Tarzoff, so that's, that's what this meeting is.
Okay.
Okay, so, and there's a pre-meeting, is it this Thursday?
It's this Thursday, but that's been co-opted by this other group, so, you know. There's gonna be two meetings on the same topic, which Senator Tar may or may not go.
You know, why, why, this is getting a lot more complicated.
It is, so I'm glad we are way ahead of this on our uh, working with interested residents.
Yeah.
So, all right, future agenda items.
Uh, so, um, April eight, the, the eclipse day, um, we have a meeting at night, I told you months ago that I would be here.
Eclipse at night.
But, but, but there's, but there's, there's a, a longer drive than I'll get here. Um, and, um, so what's the chance of us changing that meeting to Tuesday night?
Um, I don't know, have to look at the other meetings that are scheduled, Tuesday night, nine. Can we take it up next week, or?
Sure, oh, yeah, that's fine.
What do you think, Angus, that work for you? So then we have two meetings in a row, two Mondays in a row, that's tough. No, it's gonna be Tuesday, and then, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, my brain is a little bing-bunny.
Yeah, no, it's time, it's past ten.
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, we started at six.
Yeah. Five, five fifteen. Yeah, we started in, in there.
Speaking of busy days, I, I mentioned to Bob and Mark that they may wanna set their, um, monthly meeting to be the Wednesday, the sixth of March, because of the uh, they have the twenty-first coming up, and Jody, there, there's probably, there may be some issues that they need to take care of with enough lead time for their rate setting.
Wednesday, six is in, Wednesday next week.
Yeah, Wednesday next week, right, I, so I just mentioned it because they're, they're gonna look to see, but it makes some sense not to wait for the, because Wednesdays are falling late in, in the month. So rather than meeting on the thirteenth, meet on the sixth.
Okay.
That might happen, they, they, they were gonna talk a lot, think about it.
Okay.
I, I think there's a bar.
I won't be there that day, but that's okay, they can, I just won't be there.
All right, we'll send you a card.
Yeah, second.
All right.
All right.